I need to sit through this. You know, you may have seen all of Fox later, all these people, all the white people. So, I'm sorry. Okay, it depends on this. I, I, yes, okay, I'm afraid the line of lunch will be in something else. We cannot fix a 2:30 appointment or... You tell me? I'm here.
All right, good. Now, talk to Cal. I'll have new equipment for you. I heard you, Mr. Foley. My main man, out of his hand. Really pushing something? And I hope you can help him.
So, what you, I'm like, so what you want to do is out dollar first, first thing. First thing. For real. But you never knew. Great first grade. It's like, I'm like, I'm like, when you act, I'm like, I'm like, I'm like, in here, everything. I just, in here, everything's too high. But in the back, we're there. All the way up to the top, Charlie Edge, on the left side. This way, the farm, and the town road, and the fence. Just like, art. Town road, they have. Six rolls, like, yeah. Like, I can't, I can't, I can't, I can't say, I can't, I can't, I can't, I can't, I can't.
Michael.
You're sorry? I'm sorry.
Oh! 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 Big time. Big time is.
What's up, man? Where you come from? Where you come from? I said, where you come from?
They were so famous and everything. Show coming up.
All right, good evening. Um, sorry for, um, the delay, the late start, um, and so we'll jump right in.
Please stand for the pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Ms. Rice, roll call, please.
Dr. Bellamy.
President.
Ms. Hill.
Here.
Ms. Walker.
President.
Mr. Signer.
Here.
Ms. Gobin.
Here.
All right, next, we have the, um, city manager response to community matters.
Mayor Walker, I have one item that is a matter of follow-up from the July 16th meeting. And that was a request from, uh, Ms. Parker, who's here this evening, to meet with the neighborhood development staff, uh, neighborhood development services staff about the pedestrian situation on West Main Street. Uh, they met on Friday afternoon, and our staff has three takeaways that they committed to Ms. Parker at that time, uh, that Public Works will replace the broken lights, uh, on the bridge, that the west end crosswalk that is to be installed, uh, as part of the standard construction project, we anticipate will be done within the next two weeks, weather-dependent, of course, and that, uh, we will re-stripe the pedestrian crosswalk at A Street with an enhanced yield here to pedestrian marking and additional signage.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Can I touch on that really quick, Mr. Murphy?
Sure.
I think we, uh, need to give, uh, Ms. Parker a round of applause, some kudos for working diligently on getting this done. So, I just think it's lovely to be acknowledged. I know you've literally been talking about this for about two years, or at least I know we've been talking about it for like, two years. And, Mr. Murphy, uh, thank you, as well as the rest of the staff, for giving us update and getting this squared away. So, thank you for your persistence, Ms. Parker, and the rest of the community who's been helping with this.
All right. All right, um, so we'll have, uh, August 12th planning update.
Thank you, Mayor Walker. Uh, the intent this evening is for me to provide some brief comments, uh, so that, uh, the council will be aware, uh, and we will have briefed the public again, uh, on a number of items regarding, uh, August 10, 11, 12, and actions that have been taken by city staff. Uh, and afterwards, Chief Brackney and Chief Baxter are here, and the three of us, along with Mr. Wheeler, will take any of council's questions. I believe when we were here on July 16th, we talked about some of the measures that may go into place, including a perimeter around the downtown that included street closures from, uh, Ninth Street, or the Belmont Bridge, over to Ridge McIntyre, from High Street to Water Street, with an intent that, uh, those would be streets where traffic circulation would continue to be allowed. We also announced at that time, uh, that inside that perimeter, that we would not allow parking to happen on the street, and that cars that were not, uh, out of that area by 6:00 PM on Friday would be towed. We have since that time announced, uh, some alterations in the, uh, public transit, CAT routes, uh, which are available on our website, and we can also provide, uh, paper copies to anyone who requires that. We have announced, uh, some restrictions, uh, at city parks, and I'll go into some detail about that in a moment. Cancelled the city market, uh, at the location, uh, close to the downtown mall. Put in additional parking restrictions, particularly in, uh, relation to feedback from residents of Friendship Court. We'll make some changes to the, uh, availability of City Hall entrances, uh, that have been recommended for some time, uh, so that, starting tomorrow, uh, will be just the mall entrance that will be open to the public. This Friday, uh, City Hall employees in the annex and in this building, City Hall, um, will, uh, end their day at 2:00 PM. I issued a denial, uh, for the permit for the Festival of the Schmestival, and informed Mr. Beetz of, uh, his, uh, right to appeal when he inquired. Downtown parking areas have been an area where we've received a lot of questions, uh, and we have, uh, provided folks who need downtown parking, who have current spots and ground lots, access, uh, to a special pass to the Market Street Garage, and, uh, want to reinforce that anybody who has a monthly pass, uh, to the, to Market Street Garage will continue to be allowed to park there. In addition, the, uh, ground lots, uh, on Water Street, in addition to the, uh, garage, uh, structure, will all be open to the public. We've established a media area over at the Martin Luther King Performing Arts Center, um, to, uh, keep, uh, satellite trucks and all that out of the downtown area. Tonight, I'll be bringing forward to council, uh, the authorization for a declaration of local emergency, and that is on your agenda this evening. With regard to, uh, a number of questions that we've had, uh, regarding the, uh, parks and recreation, certainly we, uh, recognize that this is, uh, inconvenience and not a step that, uh, we take lightly, that is, uh, completely based on safety and our ability to, uh, protect the public in these spaces and have them be, um, also responded to appropriately by law enforcement. As a result, uh, we've taken the following steps. We're going to extend anybody who has a, uh, access pass to use parks and recreation centers by an additional 30 days at no cost to them. Anybody who has a summer pool pass and won't be able to swim this weekend will be able to use the Smith Aquatic Center for the entire month of September. With regard to city market vendors, uh, we did some surveying of vendors, and we're aware ahead of time that some folks would not be, uh, attending the market this weekend, regardless of the, uh, location. But we do realize, particularly for, uh, folks who grow produce, agriculturalists, uh, that they have a real great need to move product at this time of year because so much of it is coming in, and we'll be making up to 20 additional vendor slots available at the next two, uh, Wednesday markets, uh, at the park, and as I hope folks are aware, um, the Ix Art Park has graciously agreed to host, I believe, up to 50 of the vendors, uh, this Saturday. We will also, uh, be advertising the locations of other farmers' markets, uh, in order to help vendors get customers there. With that, uh, any questions that the council may have for myself, Mr. Wheeler, or the two chiefs at this time?
So, I have a, a question in regards, so I think we've been hearing from a variety of community members, uh, the perception or the feeling in which we've essentially, we're essentially shutting the city down, um, and now, the, the individuals who bought the terror on us are winning because last year, uh, there seemed as if we didn't do enough, and now it seems like there's this super heavy-handed approach. Is there any way you can address, um, why we may be going that route, or kind of expound on that? Because a lot of people, as we're seeing here, feeling as if things aren't fair. So, if you could speak to that?
That's not really only a question for me to answer, but also, uh, Chief Brackney. But, uh, I will start, uh, by saying that, uh, you know, this is a... This is a team approach to the, uh, planning, uh, and this is the agreed-upon, uh, law enforcement strategy. Particularly in this first year, uh, we need to establish that, uh, we can keep citizens safe, and we have limited resources to do so. I will say that, uh, it is, uh, significant what we're doing in the way of closures, um, and I am aware that, uh, particularly with downtown area and businesses, there have been questions about the impact there. We do believe that the safety, uh, and security, uh, rather than access and convenience, is more important for these three days, and that the lasting impact of what happened last year for months, and in fact, for many people, the entire year afterwards, uh, is greater than, uh, it will be if we have a successful weekend and keep people safe.
Chief, is it, uh, Mayor Walker, do you mind if I ask Chief, uh, Brackner if she'd like to address that?
Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, good evening, councilors.
Good evening.
Thank you. So, I, you've often heard me say that I cannot, um, litigate what happened last year, but what I can do is put things in place to ensure as best we can the outcomes, um, of this year. And when I've looked at the plans, um, and the gaps and the failures that existed last year, I would be irresponsible if I didn't take measures, particularly around vehicular traffic, um, and its combination or its intersectionality with pedestrian traffic. So, as I've looked at each of the plans, I can come up with a plan that allows traffic that can flow around the community, but not within the community. And there's been a lot of pushback, particularly about those persons who have vehicles in the community who want to get out, um, for whatever those access, um, or convenience reasons are. So, for me, it's a really, it's a balance, as you've just stated, or, Mr. Murphy stated, is how do I balance your access and your convenience with your safety and security? And although the community doesn't know me and does not know much about me in terms of being engaged with me, only through these community meetings, it's that I'm going to put your priorities of safety and security first, and then, um, I will look at your access and convenience. And then, there has been a lot of pushback, particularly from the downtown communities of how this will affect their commerce. And what I've said repeatedly to them, my planning is not geared around tax base, my planning is not geared around incomes and revenues, my planning is geared around the fact that Charlottesville, uh, was extremely vulnerable based on the planning last year, and I cannot allow that to happen again this year.
One last question, if I may, uh, from me, I'm sure my colleagues have other questions. This may be for both of you, and maybe even Chief Baxter. Uh, I'm sure we'll have, uh, a great deal of comment tonight from members of the public. Are all of our plans essentially set in stone, or if we do hear an idea tonight that may, uh, be a great idea, that may actually work in terms of, uh, a compromise of sorts, are we flexible in terms of what we're willing to do, or is it, this is just a... Or open to suggestions, rather, I guess would be a, a better way to say?
So, some components absolutely are set in stone, but, um, in terms of our flexibility and understanding community output, the reason we restricted, um, parking around the Friendship Court area as recently as now is based on the input from the meetings that we had, and that the community has said, hey, there's gaps here, either in service or in just consideration and thought. So, there may be some room, if it, if it looks like a traffic pattern, but in terms of those hard closures where we're not going to let vehicles in, I would have to say those are, those have to be a hard closure. But if there's things that the community is seeing, um, that they're saying, hey, we would need a bit more support in this area, or we want a little less support, is some of the communities have said, I have to take that in consideration, is how that feels in the community. Um, and again, are they feeling safe or feeling unsafe, or are they actually going to be safe or unsafe? And that's how I'm going to plan it, but there isn't any input or suggestion that I have not listened to, have not written down, or responded back to, um, and we're getting input as late as today from other community constituents asking us to consider things as well.
I mean, I know I've heard from the, uh, the gentleman who play in the basket, the Tonstler Men's Basketball League, um, about how semifinals, be a lot of people, they want the games to continue, we played last year, you know, it's something good for the community, could that possibly something to happen, as well as I've heard, you know, other people have said certain things. Just throwing it out there, I know I had a conversation with Mr. Murphy about it briefly this morning, and, you know what I mean? this morning and, you know, I mean, have talked, but, you know, it's just the suggestions like that from, it's not, we want to find a balance between people feeling safe, but also people not feeling as if like they're in prison in their own neighborhoods.
I agree. And what I've said to Mr. Murphy and everyone else, that we need to find places for them. So the basketball goes on, if that means, what will we do in a rain emergency? Where would they be able to play under those conditions? And if that's the case, we offer that. And we offer another location, another venue so that we don't feel like someone else is controlling our narrative. And then it is our responsibility to help assist and find that location.
Got you. Got you. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah. And I've heard, you know, similar and have had conversations with, you know, community members. And I've said, I mean, I understand even, you know, at my place of employment with the city, you know, the decisions that have been made with that, there have been a lot of staff members and concerns around that. But I've, you know, shared in every conversation that I've had is that it's even hard for me to advocate or push because I don't know all the information that you all know and I wouldn't want to be wrong. So while I think that, you know, we don't want to be in our community and held hostage within it, we also, I was on Fourth Street last year and I don't want, you know, a group of people to be, you know, in our parks or anything like that and then be targeted. It's just, it's a hard, it's a hard, I mean, the options are, all are very hard. And I, I mean, for me personally, I just, I've been just kind of observing because I don't want to make that decision and advocate in a different direction and then someone gets hurt. I can't deal with that. So I hope that, you know, that we are able to address these matters in a way that people are not in charge, are not shaping the narrative and are not in positions where they can be harmed. We just, we just have a lot of work to do.
I couldn't agree with you more.
Chief Brackney, earlier today at the community meeting, you kind of just explained how law enforcement will be responding. Could you just kind of give that summary again to this, this audience?
Yes, and even adding more clarity from community feedback saying even our message needs to be as clear as possible. Again, there were some very clearly identified gaps in our response as law enforcement personnel last year. And from my point down, pushed down to every single person that will be part of the unified command and Chief Baxter will be able to help with that. But Virginia State Police, UVA, Abomaro, and the city police personnel, as well as those other ones coming in from other communities to help us. Last year, there is the optics that we were policing ideologies and not violent behaviors. And that cannot be and will not be tolerated in this community. I have my own personal beliefs about those persons who may be coming into the community, but I cannot support what went on last year, what I see, that there was a significant law enforcement presence who stood by and did not respond in the way that they were trained. However, with that exact positioning, the officers and I believe every law enforcement professional is dedicated to getting it right this time. We don't have the opportunity to get it wrong two years in a row. And then we cannot move forward really just having Charlottesville control its own narrative if we don't. So when I'm putting these measures into place, it is not so that we can restrict, it is so that we can build a platform. Officers have been very clearly told, you de-escalate as quickly as possible and if not, those persons who are committing violent acts, those are the persons that we engage and that's simply not negotiable.
So can I, can I, one more thing. So Chief Brackney, to that point, right, one of the things that specifically in regards to that, that I worry about when we hear, and thank you for what you said, but I do worry about when we hear, you make sure you police the actions and not the ideologies. The violent actions is because like when black folk, when we are the ones who, like we saw last year, these, and I'm just going to call it spade to spade, we saw a lot of white people with AR-15s and all these other kind of weapons walking around, right? And they were the aggressors. They were the ones who were definitely, I mean, I know what I dealt with on the Saturday last year, right? They were the ones who were definitely like, they came here for beef. But if black folk were to do that, we know last year there wouldn't have been people just standing idle. Now, so that same token, this year, if we say that we're going to make sure we engage when we see behaviors and not ideologies, it's going to be really difficult for a lot of people, and I'm just going to be honest, again, if you look like me, if you are African-American and you dealt with what you dealt with last year, for you to be in this same space, not be upset, and if you see one of these individuals not have some kind of triggering of which you may just want to say, yo, you did this to me last year, so what's up this year? And I know we can't just go out and be fighting, but we need to be prepared for, there has to be some leeway for people to be able to deal with those past experiences because that's real.
And again, Ms., I have to give, I know we're not allowed to shout out, but Ms. Oliver and Ms. Joy, we just left the meeting and said, how do we balance those triggers, right? There are a lot of persons who are triggered by just a significant law enforcement presence, particularly since we have violated the social contract that has been given to us to enforce the laws equitably and equally. So I can't say, yo, pushback against any of that. What I've said to them is, worse, someone can have an NWA moment and that's okay. There's, they're protected by their constitutional rights.
Right. I think it's the first time I've heard a chief represent NWA. At the record state. She hasn't explained it to me, chief. All right, I got you.
But what I've said is, we don't have a zero, we're not implementing a zero tolerance either, right? Because when you start with zero tolerance, it actually sweeps in people and pulls in a net of folks who are no up there for any other reason to exercise their constitutional rights. So none of your constitutional rights around free speech, around lawful assemblies and around things like, you know, Second Amendment, whether we like it or not, will be suspended because it's August 10th, 11th, and 12th in Charlottesville. And it won't be suspended on August 13th either. That you should have the right to do that and express yourself in a lawful manner. When I say that is, someone else's First Amendment rights cannot, or their constitutional rights and they're exercising of those, cannot infringe on someone else's. So you can say what you like, within reason and what the courts have said around fighting words and fighting doctrine and things of that nature when it comes to safety and security. But freedom of expression, that's literally how we've gotten to this world and this is how we've gotten to a firm state of democracy. And it's just a matter of just changing the narrative around law enforcement professionals and how we engage those communities we serve.
Appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Mayor Walker, I just have a comment. And again, I just want to applaud you and the, and the operations team because I've been to several of the meetings so that every, every meeting has new questions. And I've actually seen your, your, your approach evolve based on the input that you've gotten. So I, I like the, the way you've presented this, this is the foundation. It's better to have that really, you know, double reinforced foundational wall to, to be a bulwark against a type-five hurricane. And then at the end of the day, it's a type-two, well, you've got the foundation to build a whole new world on. So I really appreciate your philosophy and your approach and your engagement with the community. I fully support the hard work you've put into this and I'm very grateful.
Can we go keep doing this every year though? We're going to shut down for them every year?
So I think that's a valid question. We've heard that from a lot of people and for those who are listening or watching and in here, Ms. Hudson, Tanisha Hudson just asked, are we going to shut down every year? And I do think that's something that a lot of people want to know. Is this going to be the precedent? I think Mr. Murphy touched on a little bit of that because this is the first year after we need to wrap in, but I mean, is that something that you all foresee or?
Chief Baxter, you addressed this earlier.
Yes, and echo what Mr. Murphy said. What we're convinced of as planners and as public safety leaders is that, as Chief Brackney said earlier, we've got to get this right. And that that then becomes the zero point from which we can then, as a community, begin to talk about what 2019 looks like. And in fact, we talked about that this morning in a meeting about how we would begin to build a framework and a structure for planning for that, both from a public safety perspective and as importantly, from a community perspective with a lot of community input. What we are confronted with this year in terms of the timeline and in terms of the risk, I think logically trumped having those two efforts take place at the same time. There are just too many unknowns and not a real foundation yet. I hope that answers your question.
No.
So if you're just building on it and what we're going to ask of our public and elected officials and our community persons is, let's start defining for ourselves what Charlottesville looks like in 2019. If you let someone else hold your narrative hostage, then that's what's going to happen to us next year. So I think the conversation starts literally on Monday. What does Charlottesville look like in 2019? Who's going to own that narrative? Who's going to control that narrative? And more importantly, who's going to take responsibility for help planning and moving and branding and marketing that narrative forward?
Well, we tried to, the police did. So let's make that clear that while we being punished, the police didn't, they haven't even been reprimanded.
Okay, Chief Baxter, did you, so Tanisha, we're going to have public comments.
But we, that needs to be covered though.
Did you have, did you have something to share? Okay.
Madam Mayor, one other question. I want to thank you all too, and you're both new in your, in these new roles, so you brought a lot to it. I do want to ask, how do we, how do we explain, I asked a question to staff, how do we explain about the closing of the parks specifically? I get almost everything else, but just how do we, how do we explain that piece, how that's tied to the, to the security strategy?
So the parks, the parkland itself is not closed, right? You can still walk into a park and, right? With one exception being some of the area of McIntyre Park.
Okay, but the pools, the facilities.
But the facilities themselves, we don't have the ability to provide the security necessary because of our investment in the security of all these other areas.
The park facilities is because of, you don't have the security, you don't have the people to provide security around those.
We don't have the resources to be able to provide the security that we think collectively would be necessary, excuse me, should, should they be open, right? And the other, the other issue that Brian Daley could speak to more accurately than I could, but that he's shared with me, is that he's already had in the last many weeks, parents of young staff members say, my kid's not coming to work that weekend. So there's a staffing challenge as well. We understand the symbolism of that decision and we understand the impact of it, but we're asking the community to understand that that's part of an overall planning strategy to keep the community safe.
All right. I think it's helpful for the public to hear that. Thank you.
That's a good question.
All right. Any other? All right, thanks.
If you want to quit your jobs.
Yeah, okay.
Quit your jobs to keep the community safe.
What else is wrong?
Yes, the police everywhere have done something wrong.
You got that.
Yeah.
All right, so I have one announcement before, thank you, before we continue. So Virginia Code 15.2-1510.1 requires city council to announce the severance benefits provided to departing official. As many of you know, Maurice Jones departed from the position of city manager last week. The severance benefits provided to the department, departing city manager are those references in his employment agreement dated December 7th, 2015, which has been a matter of public record since 2015. Those severance benefits are as follows. Per Section 7A of the employment agreement, payment equal to six months of salary that was in effect as of July 31st, 2018, and payment for any accrued annual leave, also at the rate of pay in effect as of July 31st, 2018. The specific amount of those payments to be determined by payroll and accounting staff and two per Section 17 of the employment agreement. Forgiveness of the balance of a no-interest loan, the balance of the no-interest loan So was there, was there another announcement? No, no, okay.
I don't have any announcements.
And if there are any, it sounds like there are questions, so if there are, when you come up, we'll try to, you know, try to answer those. Before we start the Community Matters, I just would like to talk a little bit about the, the last, you know, couple of weeks and specifically my Facebook post and tweet about us needing to protest a city council decision and my decision to make public the decision-making process of the interim city manager positions. I have been, I've had some radio interviews today, so I've been vocal about both the initial candidate considered, Zemp, who wrote an article that was, you know, released in the paper, and also the, you know, current selection of Mr. Murphy. And so what I'll first say to this was, I ran on a platform of transparency. I've lived my life on that platform. In no way should I have, in my opinion, received what I've received over the past three weeks and most of that, I mean, the most alarming of that is comparisons to the current member occupying the White House in DC. And so I'm not going to go into details here. Hopefully you all are on social media, you've watched that. But I will say that my request to this council was a very simple request, that we allow the two assistant city managers to interview for the position and tell us their opinion that we, now I'm a complete blank, and that we allow staff and citizens to provide input of this decision-making process. And they knew before I made a public statement that if they did not offer citizens and staff an opportunity to weigh in, that I would go public. I made that statement in a closed session meeting to them, so it shouldn't have been a surprise to anyone. And the ax there was again, for this information and this person to be made public. I'm pretty sure that there are very, you know, that they are different opinions about my decisions. I've heard a lot of those and I've received emails about them. And when you all come up tonight, I will make sure that I'm answering any questions about my actions. But that is what I wanted to make, make sure that occurred. And I think we need to definitely understand the power that the person in the city manager position has in this city and how if, which I think is the most important, if we are, which I don't think we are, but if we are moving to a city that's equitable, that everyone can thrive in, then we make decisions differently than we've made them in the past. I'm not seeing that. But that is what we have to do. And so I just wanted to say that beforehand to answer some of the questions that I've been receiving from throughout the community about my decision to make this process public and if you all have any.
I have a question. So you mentioned you wanting to allow the two ACMs to interview as well as have staff and citizen input. That was after we had come to a decision, as I recall, it was during that closed session when we ultimately had, had come to a decision on moving forward. That wasn't something that I remember being brought up at the beginning of the process because I, so I'm trying to understand when you raised that to the council because we were curious of what you were going to do after the closed session and.
Yes, but I told you during the closed session.
Right, I'm saying that, I just came up during the closed session. Once the decision was already made and you were not happy with it.
So not happy with it, what, what did I say to you all?
You did not support the decision.
No, and why?
Because you thought the process was flawed.
Okay. And one thing, and one thing I will say, and I want this to be on record, is that I did make, I did do things, a couple of things that I wish I had done differently. And one of those things is, I only had this conversation with one person about my concern about how this person entered the process. I thought that this would be an issue that would end us up exactly where we are. I thought that this would be an issue that would end us up exactly where we are. My relationship with Counselor Galvin and Signer, that, that wasn't an issue, and they were not involved at this point until later in the conversation. I should have brought this conversation up to Heather when I first had the thought, and I did not do that. And so, that is something that I should have done differently, was the moment that I found out that this person was coming, how you received this person's information, and that I had concerns about it, I should have brought, brought it up to you. I was hoping that we would be listening and hearing each other, which did not happen. But that is something that, in looking back on this and what I could have done differently to maybe ended up in a different place, is I could, I should have said something to you.
Because it was June 9th when I, I did bring this to the group.
Yeah. And I agree, and that's what I'm saying.
I'm saying, I let all the counselors know on June 9th.
Huh. But that doesn't mean, so for what you're saying, I hear you, which, that doesn't change how I felt about the process.
That's fine.
And I don't think any of you all were open to listening to that.
Yeah, I think it's to be, it's to be noted that. It's been, it's, it's to be noted that, I mean, Mayor Walker, she was clear early on that she didn't.
During the closed session?
Well, that was when we would talk about it, during the closed session. She was clear that she didn't agree with the, the process. She was clear that she didn't agree with the candidate, and that's when we subsequently continued to have these debates and one vote, three, two, or one, I mean, all this other stuff, like, I don't quite understand why you're saying.
But we discussed broadly the process during our closed session, and I feel like we still came out of a four-one decision after discussing that process.
No, we did, wait, no, we didn't. We didn't come out of four-one decision after discussing that process. It was a three, hold on, hold on, hold on. No, 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 it was, it was a, I mean, so now, if we're talking about it, when we initially, when we initially talked about it, it was a decision where we said, okay, well, we have to figure out how we're going to go forth. That was that Wednesday, correct?
That Wednesday, correct.
And then we all had, so that, at that date, it was, it was four-one.
Oh, no. Can I say something before then? So, actually, there was a commitment to look at, one of our ACMs would presented a challenge, and Signer had a lot of concerns about this process, but the three of us, which we had a conversation about, Bellamy, Signer, and myself, we supported an ACM initially before the four to one, so it was a three to two in that.
That was prior to Mayor, Mr. Signer seeing, seeing the interview.
That's not true. It's not personal, but that's not true. I mean, if I, just because important, this is not personal. There's just a couple of things. I'm not meaning to, if I, I don't have to.
No, Kenny, I'm interested in this, y'all, I am.
No, so, so just a couple of points, and again, this, it's just, there are just facts here in the public, and I think you're right. Transparency is really important now, it's a hugely important position, so, okay, so what?
Hold on, can we, can we just listen?
If you're, you're in charge of the room, so what happened was, I supported, you did not tell council that you wanted, Madam Mayor, us to interview both candidates. You said that you supported Leslie Beauregard, and that was the proposal Tuesday night.
You're right.
And that was after the council meeting, and I said, "I need to watch the videos because I've been out of town." I got back really late. I watched the videos the next morning, and about 10:30, I sent you a text before the council meeting, closed session, saying, "I just watched the video, and I think that we should go with him." And that, that was exactly what happened.
So, you never supported bringing Leslie in?
I, and then you sent me a text.
No, I'm asking you a question.
You said, "She'll be available," you said, "She'll be available."
No, you never say it.
For us to talk to. I, I said, "Yeah, we could talk to her," but I said, "I supported the other candidate." I didn't know what was happening with the other counselors. I didn't spend my day on the, so I'm just saying that, that was what, that was what happened, and then once I understood, I think from the other counselors, that there was enough support for, for the candidate, for Zemp to get it, then it was like, why was, and as it turned out, we never called her in.
Well, hold on, hold on.
I have a couple, I have a couple other points, just, just a couple other facts.
Oh, but I would like to address that, so we won't get too far away. So, my understanding of a conversation that we first had face-to-face was even that you did support, that I called and spoke to, I spoke to you, Heather, correct, when you sent a message back afterwards about that you were still going to fight for this candidate? So, based on, and I said that Mike and Wes supported going with the ACM, right?
What, the talking, I thought it was just to have someone be interviewed at that point, not that a decision was being based, because we hadn't even interviewed an ACM at that point. And I knew that Mike had not had a chance yet to see the interview, so until, until he saw the interview, I said, "If he's interviewing, make your decision."
Okay, so I'm just, that's just how our conversation went, and I'm just saying that what I heard you say, and I even called after that. So, I think it's very.
It was me, Nakia, and Mike. We all said that we wanted to bring in the ACM. That's how we got to the whole point of it being three-two, and then it flipped the next day.
But did not, Mike hadn't seen it.
We had a four-one vote, and what happened was, an offer was extended by the mayor that was accepted on Wednesday night, and then his email was sent to us. We've been sued multiple times, we're under discovery.
That's not.
When an offer and acceptance has happened, and then at 4:47 in the morning, you sent us an email saying you changed your mind, but we had an email from the candidate saying, "I accept." And that causes concern for me on grounds of law, and except, well, are we going to get sued by this candidate?
So, Mike, how many times do we have to go through my conversation with the candidate? Do we need to go through it again?
Sure, I mean, it's, it's been raised, but I think that's an important fact, that he understood, he understood that he had accepted an offer.
But that is not what he should have understood from me.
Well, then, then tell the public why.
Because my comment to him was that there was support for you, four to one, excluding me, Ms. Rice, we were together, when we had this conversation, that we were waiting to hear back from you about the conversation he said he needed to have with his wife. And because I can separate, which you have a difficult time doing, I still had that conversation with him.
Okay, so, his understanding was that he accepted an offer of employment.
So, I have text messages from him, and he still knew that things were up in the air, so you keep saying that, but that's not the case.
He didn't accept, hold on, hold on, hold on. He didn't, he didn't accept.
He wasn't my friend, I never met him.
Yo, 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 can we have this conversation, please? So, the, Mr. Signer, the only.
Not a friend of a friend, never talked to him.
Mr. Signer, one of the things I'm confused about.
And then opposed him before I watched the video.
But Mike, you just.
Hold on, Tanisha, can we?
You had your head down with your disrespectful self. Disrespect. You know, that's the example.
So, Mr. Signer, one of the things in regards to that, that I'm finding a little trouble with this, because I remember distinctively while I was in Atlanta, Ms. Walker and I had already had the conversation in regards to that we think we need to bring an ACM. And then you and I spoke at that point as well, and you said, "Okay, you agree." And that's how we had got to the point where three of us had said that we needed to bring in and interview the ACM. And then the next morning is when you said, the next day is when you said, "I've already communicated with Ms. Walker that I've changed my mind." And then we went into this whole thing where it was, the three of you were in favor of this gentleman, we were in favor of still bringing the ACM. That's how, so, that's why I'm.
Well, I said all the way through that I had not had a chance to review the materials yet. I had not watched the video, so every time that I watched it.
And that is true, and I even encouraged you to watch it, right? Okay, so.
Exactly, so I did that very early, and I did it late, so I never made, and those are not decisions, the decision happens during closed session. So, those are conversations. So, I told, at least I told Mayor Walker that I had not watched the video yet. Then when I did, I thought that he was the best candidate, and I let you know that before the closed session. Leslie Beauregard came in from vacation, as I understood, and was very upset that she had waited and then was not called in, and then, as I understood, withdrew herself from the process because it was such a bad experience. So, I was worried about that because she served the city for a long time. So, these were all of the, the kind of behind-the-scenes things that were concerning. Then there was another concern that I had.
So, I called Leslie in from vacation.
That was what I heard.
To have her sit and wait.
In Virginia Beach.
And I never, so Leslie was back in town, and I've said that to you already, and if she's in the building and she wants to come and speak to us, that's on her. But I think, again, we, we've discussed that, and hopefully, you've discussed it with Leslie.
I let, I left her a message apologizing for the experience that she's had, I mean, because I was really worried about that.
No, but did you, did you talk to her?
No, I haven't talked to her.
All right.
This whole.
So, Mayor Walker, ma'am, please make a comment.
Yeah, this whole thing is like.
And I think, I think our, our conversation here tonight is, is demonstrating the real importance of hearing from the public this evening about the process that we need to proceed with for the permanent city manager, okay? Just want us to all, we're all on track.
For the permanent.
I think for the permanent city manager. So, I, so Mayor, I just wanted to just offer that to get us to move forward.
I agree.
It's sad to have it, she died.
All right. All right, so we're going to start, start Community Matters. Mary Carey.
I'm sorry, Heather, you didn't get your pick. But anyway, I'm Mary Carey, and I'm a city resident, and I forgot what I was going to say because I can see what y'all go through behind closed doors, and I would like to be a flower in the world. But from what I can see, the guy that, whoever sent to be interviewed wouldn't have been strong for Charlottesville anyway, because he had to send a letter to resign. Now, if you were strong, you get up here and you tell the public, "I'm not going anywhere. I was picked. I would like for y'all to consider me, and if you don't consider me, I have, I have something else to say." I wouldn't send no letter like a coward. I mean, he wouldn't have been strong anyway. He would have been something for y'all, Ms. Gavin, Mr. Signer, and you, Ms. Hill, to balance. He would have been y'all's little string that would have done whatever you wanted him to do in City Matters. Don't sit there and look at me like that, because you know it's true. See, because I don't like what's going on in city council right now. You in your nine-hundred-ninety-nine-thousand-dollar house, don't make no room in here. So, I'm going to tell you right now, I would like to say, before I saw all of this drama up here with our city council members, I got a lot of Facebook comments, negativity, all kinds of stuff about our mayor, which I would say, Koi Barefoot and Henry Graff and all them got their opinions is true, but they make me think they're part of the other side. And, since I can't say what I came up and say, because I don't have that much time left, I hope I can come back later. I'd just like to say, it must be something about Ms., about our, our mayor that y'all afraid of. Is it because she's young, gifted, and black? Or is it because she's smarter than y'all? Or is it because she don't get up here and try to take over, Mr. Signer, Mr. Bellamy? Y'all disrespected her from day one. Every time she tried to run this meeting, Mr. Bellamy is the one that runs the meeting because she can't get a word in. And Mr. Signer, you ought to be ashamed of yourself, because you shouldn't even be there anyway. You lied to get there. And then, hey, Ms. Hill, Ms., our mayor had said nothing but good things about you, and then you go sit up here and stab her in the back in the public. And see, when you get behind closed doors and do this bullshit, and you come out here and show us exactly what you made of, I don't want to talk to you. When you get out here and show us what y'all made of, we made a mistake. But not here. We didn't make a mistake here. And y'all talking about y'all want a strong mayor and all this. Mr. Bellamy, you said on Facebook, you know that stuff get out there, don't go nowhere. You said, you was talking all about the strong mayor and everything and all, and you had a, a, a Mayor Walker up in there, you didn't mention her name one time about strong mayor. But y'all afraid.
What?
Y'all afraid.
You read it?
Y'all afraid that she would make a strong mayor, and I got a strange feeling, she can't be bought. That's why y'all afraid of her. She can't be bought. That Mr. Zemp man, he resigned because he was bought. Now, you gave him some promises that he probably think that he couldn't keep, and that's why he sent that bogus letter that I think somebody helped him write. But I'm going to tell you right now, y'all keep on with this stuff, and it's going to be some new people sitting up there for next year.
Thank you.
And then you got sent in, Ms. Hill.
Thank you, Ms. Carey.
I would, I would just say that through this whole process, the hardest thing for me has been the impact it had on my relationship with the mayor, and I'm saddened by that.
Well, you started it. You ought to be saying, when I was growing up, I had a little rich white girl that I used to go play with too. But you know what? Every time her mama came in the house, she would tell that little rich white girl, "I don't told you about touching this nigger, because it might rub off on you." Is you afraid that she might rub off on you? Is that what it is? I think so. Yes, you are. Yes, you are.
Thank you, Ms. Carey.
Hold on, hold on, hold on. Don't say no, yeah?
No, ma'am.
She tripping.
Madam Mayor, may I, may I say something in response, under our rules?
I have two minutes.
This, this gentleman served our country for 23 years, he has a military. He has a military wife. When she watched, when she watched what was happening, when she watched, his parents was holding up their family.
Excuse me?
What just happened, his name being dragged through the mud, he does not deserve that. Okay, this is unfair to somebody who was willing, and Ms. Walker wanted to hire him as a consultant for a city council to help us out.
Because I, I, I hope you get the point that you all don't want to miss things, right? You, you want to be paying attention. You definitely want Mike to talk so he can, you know, just, I understand, but, but please.
They're going to do the right thing.
Mayor Walker, do you propose hiring him as a consultant?
Listen, I, I can talk.
Okay.
Thank you very much. So.
Who you saying? I didn't say his name.
You said he came here for money. You said he was corrupt.
You came for money?
You just said he was corrupt.
You been getting paid to sit there and you sit down.
Mary Carey, you just accused him publicly of corruption.
Mike, well, look, let me tell you something.
Excuse me?
I accuse you of corruption, because you wanted him in there so you could dangle him. So, why you defend somebody that was in the army, and he's supposed to be brave and strong, but he can write a letter to say he don't want something? He's not that brave and strong.
So, excuse me.
You're the one who got up there illegally. You're the corrupt one.
Thank you, Ms. Carey. So, to address Counselor Signer's point, I watched the video. I was late to the interview. I caught the end of the interview with this. Because of my respect for Heather, I looked at the interview, I said, "Okay, let me remove myself and what I think about this process and how it happened. If this person could help," we do have some departments in the city, I mean, probably all the departments in the city, that need to be strengthened so that it is running more efficiently for our citizens, right? If this person does what Heather believes that they can do, not bring them in as a city manager, but if he could help strengthen, and I made a point during our conversations that we wouldn't be focused on any turnover specialist, right? Did I say this to you, Mike? And that we would be talking about, based on how he presented in parts of the interview, that he could maybe be beneficial to helping with these departments. So, that was one. Also, the information that you didn't work hard enough to make sure all was released, my concerns about this process was that even on the first line of his cover letter, what does he say, Mike? What key word did he leave out, since you want to be helpful today? What did he, what did he leave out? He said, "As your city manager," there's a key point in there that he left out. I said during the interview, which I wanted citizens to have access to the cover letter and resume, which you all did not get all that information, and the video, so that you can make a decision for yourself. There are people in this community saying I was trying to, you know, sway your opinions. That's not how I work. I want you to have the information and make the decision on your own. So, the interview and cover letter were not released for you to make a decision. Out of that interview, cover, interview process, there were times during the interview, which I've now watched three times, where I thought he had more information than someone just from the outside should have had. When we had a phone conversation with him, he said about 75% of his information came from research, and about 20. and about 25 came from his connections to the community. Is that true information or is it false? No, I'm talking to the councilors. Did we have this discussion and is that what he said?
That's exactly what he said.
I said 85%.
And so again, I expressed my concerns about the process, how this person was brought in. As a city manager, there was nothing about this process that made me believe that he would be here for an interim period and I voiced that to you all repeatedly.
Mayor, Mayor Walker, um, the decision about whether or not someone would be a permanent city manager was always going to be the decision of this council and, and the, every single member of this council did not want anything but an interim city manager. I just want to underline that.
And that is what you all said.
Exactly. So that, that's exactly right.
But at any point, Kathy, was there nothing in his presentation, was there nothing in your cover le-, his cover letter? You even had concerns about this person, um, initially. There were things that were for me troubling that would make it look like if you were looking at it from my end, that this person was a shoo-in. And I expressed that to you all. At any point did you all attempt to say, I-
Yes.
I ain't finished. How do you, what's your answer?
I apologize. I'm sorry. I got ahead of myself. Your right to use. I'm sorry.
Go ahead, Mike. Oh, go ahead.
So we did. We went at the very end. One of the reasons we were in that closed session for so long was we spent the last half an hour on this point. We drilled and we got him on the phone and we said, would you be willing to only do this for four to six months? And he said, I gotta talk to my wife and we wanted to make sure. And then we said, would you be willing to go through exhaustive community engagement? Because we needed to know, this process did happen quickly. You don't do community engagement for an interim. But we all were unified. We would not hire somebody who would shoo-in and get, get a toehold. We needed to, we were gonna go through exhaustive, just like we did for the police chief and for the NDS chief. We did not want anybody to come in here without getting a full buy-in of community at all. And we had an exhaustive discussion about it.
So it's nothing about this process?
And you know that. That was not-
No, I'm asking you.
And we, we fought, we said, there's no way. We would, we absolutely didn't want him to, to get stuck in there.
No, I don't think, and honestly, the conversation that we had in the room with Counselor Galvin and Signer initially, they were asking questions. So again, I have maintained where I thought the problem began and that I wasn't comfortable. And as a whole, making this decision, and so we can get to that. Making this decision with this council, even, you know, making the decision not to renew, um, Maurice Jones's contract, I repeatedly said to this council that I did not trust making this decision with them, repeatedly. And so if, again, if I'm expressing concerns to you all and at not one point did you all appear to take any of the concerns that I had about the process, about the fears that this person could be a shoo-in, at no point did you all take it seriously. And you can't say that there was absolutely no reason for you not to, um, for you to be dismissive. If you wanted me to be more understanding of your position, first of all, it would have required respect and a conversation.
Mayor, Mayor Walker, may I say something? We, we had, we had the discussion and the conversation and the very first night, we debated quite a lot. And, and, and like in all of our debates, um, it's sometimes it, you're swayed and sometimes you're not. My questions that I had about this particular candidate were, were all answered. After he was, uh, he met with us and discussed, um, his experience with us, I felt he was more than qualified to be an interim city manager and that he was going to do at the same time the evaluation, um, of our, of our bureaucracy, just as we all wanted. And, and, and in spite of all our arguments, we couldn't convince you and I respect that. I respect the fact that you didn't-
You couldn't convince me to do what, Kathy?
To, to agree to hire him.
Oh, no, she did agree to hire him.
Well, no, you, you, she voted, no, no, she voted against it. She never voted for him.
But you extended the offer on her behalf.
But then she, but she, but you-
But you just said yourself, you know, I'm not doing this with you.
Okay, I, I just, I think, all I wanted, that's all I wanted to add, okay?
All right, okay. And I, I guess I'm just struggling because we've made other-
We've made other, excuse me, please.
We, we've had other decisions that we've had to make as a, as a group for permanent hires. One of which I fell on the, on the minority end and was really emotional about. But I, I understood that that, that the vote that came out was the vote of this council and I supported it and have supported it since that vote was taken.
So-
And in terms of this process, I'm still struggling because I, I feel like there's this misnomer that I knew this person. I had never met or talked to this person until the day I walked in to City Hall when those interviews were conducted. Do I know someone in the community that knew them? Yes. They simply, they asked me, how would such a person who's interested in be considered? And I presented that to all of council and to Ms. Rice and I was instructed to have that person give their information directly to Ms. Rice back in early June. In the meantime, it was also discovered that that person was already in Springstead Waters database. They just hadn't been pulled in because they hadn't identified that they would be interested in the interim position in, in Virginia because they were coming from the locality. So the irony for me is had we just not, had no one even reached out to me at all, that person still would have been sitting at that interview table in front of us because they would have come through the organic process. And I think that the timeline that we asked for from the court-
So Heather, how's that, how, I have several, but how's that true? How would they, they didn't enter it without coming through you in the first place? We did not receive their information until it was sent through.
Because Springstead Waters also got it through their normal paths and that was the outline that I asked for Ms. Rice to put together that we have that showed that. That that person, when they came to Ms. Rice with that person's name, they're like, no, this is the person that we already had through our internal process. And they didn't realize that it was the same person because that person had worked with the person who had recently left Springstead Waters and had, had had a relationship with them, had done other projects with them. And so that's what was laid out when I asked for the timeline of communications with Springstead from, from Ms. Rice. Ms. Rice, I'm not sure if, about accurate.
Mr. Murphy, would you like to lead?
What?
I don't see to be talking about you.
And I agree. I think we can move on.
Thank you.
So John Hayden.
As much as they drill, we want answers. We ask about them too.
They're not drilling me.
Why are they doing you so long?
All right.
Ms. Walker, I've heard you say, "I want the people to be heard." I hope that includes me and you allow me-
Excuse me, we-
I hope you allow me to speak without interruption. Are we gonna do this every two words?
And just talk.
As the anniversary of the Unite the Right rally comes up, we as a community need to acknowledge the hate that came to town and recognize that those who chose to fight, as evidenced by the arrests, were not Charlottesville citizens but used our streets as a battleground. I'm not talking about hateful or extremist views. Those rightfully should be condemned. But people need to be able to express their views and opinions without the fear of verbal and physical repercussions from those who disagree. I've had discussions and debates with people like Don Gathers, Rick Turner, Jeff Fogel, and others. And it usually ends with a better understanding of each other, maybe not in agreement, but usually with a handshake. I hear all the buzzwords like diversity and inclusion. Well, let's add this word, tolerance. Definition, the ability or willingness to tolerate something, in particular, the existence of opinions or behavior that one does not necessarily agree with. I believe our founding fathers had tolerance in mind when-
Excuse me. Paige, can you pause?
I believe our founding fathers had tolerance in mind when they wrote the First Amendment so that all points of view could, could and should be allowed to be expressed. On the way in here, I did not see a sign that said, "Leave your First Amendment at the door." Yet that seems to be what happens to those who the social justice warriors disapprove of. Without that, eventually we will evolve into two separate species, the Eloy and the Morlocks.
Excuse me.
Like the five stages of grief, denial, anger, bargaining, depression, and acceptance, after this anniversary, we need to move on and stop using this date as a crutch for all the ills of society that pit one against the other. I'd like to end with a quote from, I'd like to end with a quote from Thomas Jefferson.
Can we let him finish?
No, we can't.
Yes, we have to. Just like, because just like everyone else, we've just been having this conversation at every level, right? So, did you understand the, what we've been talking about for over a year now about First Amendment?
Yeah, I don't understand.
Okay. So it's not about whether you care or not, but if we, he has a right to speak. And so we, how long, but how long do you want him up here? Okay, so again, limited amount of time or do you want him to stay up here longer? Because right now it's extended.
You were out here milling with us before you got up there. I don't know why you're telling us to stop now. You were right there.
Okay, and I would like for everyone in this room who I've been a part of to tell me how I presented in the room. Because you can watch video, okay? Because I know how I present. So unless you had your eye on me the whole time, when I have something to say, I say it. And then I'm done. So you haven't seen me with a sign? You haven't seen me in the back screaming? You usually see me in the back, standing there observing, paying attention to everything and then when I have something to say, I say it. No, what I'm telling you is how I act. You just responded about how I respond in this world and I'm correcting you. Okay, so that's what I'm saying. So what I'm saying is that he is here. I'm not saying I want to listen to him or that you should have to listen to him. I'm just telling you where we are.
But we also have the right to laugh in his face.
Yeah, hold on, hold on.
So-
All of this, that I'm to be tolerated and not allowed to just speak.
Just-
What are you? Mr. Hayden, continue.
Can I finish?
Yeah, she already said you could continue. What are you doing?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear her with all of this. I'd like to end with a quote from Thomas Jefferson that I think is sage advice for all of us. "I never considered a difference of opinion in politics, in religion, in philosophy as a cause for withdrawing from a friend."
Okay, so we have John Delhanti.
Yes, I'm John Delhanti. I live in Charlottesville. And I'm just gonna make comments on the process of selecting the city manager and this has gone way beyond anything I can say. But just let me say some basic points and I'll say this extemporaneously. Mayor Walker, I was disappointed in some of your actions and I, I looked at your Facebook page and to understand where you were coming from. And my basic criticism, after all is said and done, is that we were working under an established system with established bylaws in a closed system. And there was a vote, be it 4-1, 3-2, whatever it came out to be, for a certain action and you took it upon yourself to go outside these, this established forum to, to make your points. Now whether you're gonna change that forum subsequently is up to the council to decide. But that was my basic criticism. So let me just say something a little bit more off the cuff here and not go into the rest of what you've been discussing. And that is, the nature of these overly dramatic confrontations that you as the leader of the City Council have to have some responsibility to control and to funnel so we come up with some positive action going forward. Because a lot of what we've been hearing is just verbiage and emotion and, and anger and that's not doing us any good at all. What's particularly, what's particularly disappointing is that this takes such severe racial overtones that we're, we're seeing from what we read in the newspaper and in, and on Facebook that it's 3-2 means three white people, two black people. And it, and it, but it doesn't have to be. That's the point. If we, if, if we, if particularly you, you, you are our leader. You're the only mayor we have. And for you to create the kind of atmosphere, either in closed session or here with transparency, that can, can create, to make something creative is, is, uh, what I would see going forward. One other, the only part of my prepared speech, you mentioned Trump and you must have hacked my emails, my speech because it was exactly the point I was gonna make. When, when someone disagrees with President Trump, he hits back via social media, just as you did. And then he calls, then he calls out his core supporters to shout his praise, obviously, just as you've done. Is, is that-
Hold on, wait.
Is that the kind, is that the kind of leadership example you want to go forward? And let me, let me, am I on to time?
You are, but, hold on, finish your last question.
Let me, uh, let me finish by paraphrasing an editorial by Charles Blow in the New York Times, uh, this month. And he was talking about Trump and not just changed the verbiage to make it local. And here's, here's what he said.
Hold on, y'all, we are almost-
It is simply not healthy for Charlottesville to have a mayor stuck perpetually in attack mode, fighting enemies real and imagined and pushing an agenda that mixes exaltation of grievance and the grinding of access. Last, the, last thing I say is, I apologize to, uh, Ms. Hill for some of the ugliness that's just been said.
Okay.
Completely inappropriate.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So-
Mayor Walker, may I have two minutes before, may, may I? Please, let me, let me, let me. Please.
So-
Sir, one of the things that you just did was exactly what we've seen essentially these white supremacists and racists do for decades. When we're attacking, and some will agree and some will not agree, but I personally believe that there's a duty here because I'm not just gonna let you just talk to her crazy like that. One thing that you just did was how you just characterized her in comparing her to 45. Simply because she is to 45, simply because, yeah, well, I'll explain it to you if you listen. Simply, simply because she is speaking to a population of our community who, for generations, have felt as if they've been unheard, who's felt as if there's been a lack of transparency, who felt very angry about a variety of things that have gone on. So because her process is different from how you believe it should be in a civil or Gentile or Southern manner, because it looks different, because it looks different, you believe that she's potentially ruining our democracy? And you would, no, let me finish because we didn't interrupt you. You are essentially comparing her style to an individual who has literally made blatant racist attacks, who's called NFL players who peacefully protest sons of bitches. You are comparing her to an individual who has called people from African nations that they live in shitholes. You're comparing her to an individual who even after one of the worst moments that we've had in our city, said that there were nice people on both sides. You're comparing her, no, no, let me finish. You're essentially putting her in the same light because she chooses to take a different method- method that makes you feel uncomfortable? That I can't agree with. You can disagree with, but you take it that way.
Your, your comments are almost insulting, but I don't take it that way. I, I wasn't equating Mayor Walker with President Trump. What I was equating was the process he uses to fight back against his critics.
So I think it's a, it's a good time for me to address this process, okay?
There are those four people who elected me. You should tell them to be in the majority.
Okay. So, can I, I, I have a response, if I can respond. Can I, do I need to ask for permission from you all? So, um, so, to my point, yes, I have used social media during my campaign, which is new to me, okay? Using it, because it is the best way that I know how to reach people. So it is a new, it is a new day there. My call to people, and again, I, I'm not going to, I brought the definition of protest in here, since some people were struggling with that, but I'm going to let you all go to Webster on your own and read it. But there are calls all across this country for people to pay attention, for people to ask a lot of questions, and for people to fight injustices. So where we are today is in a new place, right? And so how do we not end up in this place 50 years from now? I'm unconcerned, I mean, I cannot emphasize that enough, about whether you are comfortable or not during this process. I have advocated and fought for people and, you know, worked my way right out of positions to fight for members of this community, and I did not even know how I was going to feed my children when I did that. So if I'm going to fight and sacrifice us, I am not concerned about whether you're comfortable about my delivery method. So what I will say, again, I am waiting for someone to tell me how my request was unreasonable, that we do not rush the process, that we hear from the people who have been in positions of power within this community, that we hear from staff and citizens. And as I've said to these council members, if this is the wrong choice, and we need to talk about how long people are in positions here that they shouldn't be in just because they've been in it, and tell, and tell I made the decision and took the initiative around the conversation concerning our last city manager, he was just in place. Whether people agree with him or not about the decision and the path that this community has been on, I'd take action. And all along the way, if Mr. Jones was in this room, he would tell you that every month, from January until I made that decision, every meeting we had, I spoke to him about the direction that I would be working on the city going, the things that were important and valuable to me, and the decisions that he made that I thought were against those. There was not one person, I mean, one time, where he could say I caught him off guard with my decision, unlike other people, okay? That decision, we had conversations every month, from the first conversation we had, okay? Honest, open conversations, okay? So that is how I make decisions. Talking to the public was something that I said the entire campaign that, that I would do. Making sure that you were in the know. I talk to people and listen to people who do and don't agree with me, and I can do that. I have learned to do it. I, it's, it's more than just tolerance. I generally, I mean, I genuinely want to hear what you have to say, because I can't build my defense against you if I don't know which direction you moving in. So I'm always paying attention. Okay? And so, there's nobody in this community that would say they attempted to have a conversation with me and they were unable to. No one. And this conversation around all, that I'm the mayor for all people, one, all people didn't vote for me. And people made it clear about what they thought about me and whether they thought I deserved to be in a role on council, period. So that was number one. I will tell you, asked one of my colleagues up here what I bring to the table, how thorough I am, my knowledge base, when I don't know something, I'm going to find out. So there is not a conversation that we've had that I have not contribute to equally or above, and not one of them up here can say it, okay? And so, how information is conveyed to the community is important for me. Not everybody come into these rooms, and they're not going to. Yes, I do use Facebook, and I'm going to continue to use Facebook. And I've said that the entire, the entire campaign. I have asked every one of them, what if this person was permanently put in place in this city, and they were the wrong person, how would it affect you and your life? So, the people that I have lived amongst, my family, my friends, the people that I've gone to school with, they are impacted by every decision people in positions of power make in this city. Kathy, Mike, and Heather, they would be able to feed their kids, have a life as normal as possible if this person was the wrong person. And I knew that I was breaking trust, that is a one shot. And there was one member of this community, of this council, that I was very concerned about that relationship with, because of the direction that we were going. So it was not an easy decision to make. But they would tell you they got my response to that decision in the middle of the night, after I didn't sleep up thinking about whether it was more important to maintain this relationship, status quo way of making decisions, or buck the system and let you all know that it is something that you should be paying attention to.
Madam Mayor.
Yes, ma'am.
Madam Mayor, there's, there's two facts that I, that have to be, that have to be put in here. Will you allow me to make them? Will you, will you allow me to make them? But this, this was, now, okay, two things was that the public is not, this is relevant to, well, I'm not pressing on her. I'm, I'm giving the, no, I'm not.
No.
The public needs to know something.
But we have to let them talk.
No, it's fine. He can make his points. Yes, please make them.
The council talked extensively about how the public would have had a chance to rake this guy over the coals, because his resume and everything would have been put out to the public six days in advance. So this is not true. It is not true that the public wouldn't have had a chance, and we could have, we could have voted against him, we could have voted against him if the public had weighed in with us. And we talked about that. The other thing is that when you brought up...
You brought that comment up?
Absolutely. That was talked about extensively in the closed session.
No, that's how you, that's what you said to me.
In the closed session, we said, his resume will be put up the Wednesday before the meeting. The public will still have a chance...
Do you remember the point that that conversation was brought up?
It was about whether or not the public would have a chance to weigh in.
Okay, Mike, go ahead.
And the other thing was this thing about his resume being hidden from the public. When you asked us at the end of the closed session on Friday, when you asked us the end of the closed session on Friday, about whether we would allow...
Hold on, we need to hear.
About, about whether we would allow the public to see his resume, we did not know about the text that he had sent you, where he said, "I would consent for the public to see my resume if council directs it." You didn't tell us that, and we would have directed it, we would have been fine with it, and you didn't tell us that, because it was right at the very end of that meeting.
So, Mike, we did not have a con, I did not ask you all to release his resume.
You did not read us the text. We didn't know that he was okay with it.
No, tell me.
We didn't, we didn't know that he was okay with it. No, because you didn't show it to us.
Okay, but it's been posted, so I think before you, before you comment...
But that was after you went public, with the text that we wanted to hide his resume. We didn't want to hide his resume.
Mr. Sutner, Mayor Walker, can we please have a point of order here, please? And Mayor Walker, could you please, could you please continue?
He's responding to the speaker, and he responded to her. He's responding to the speaker.
So I asked council to release his information, and what did you all say?
We said it, he would not, we said it's against policy, and he probably wouldn't consent to it, but he had sent you a text saying he would consent to it. You didn't tell us that he would have consented to it.
What did you say? She said yes.
We said, we said that's against policy. So if he would have consented to it, then that would have been the policy.
Do you know what time?
But you didn't tell us that.
We had the conversation?
It was right at the end of the closed session.
And you, no, you should go read the text. You should go read them.
But we didn't see the text.
No, I'm telling you, they're posted.
Because then you went on Facebook Live and attacked council for hiding his resume, but we didn't know that he would consent to see.
He released his information.
He would have been okay with it.
Okay. So council told me no. That's what the conversation was, Mike.
But we didn't know that he had said, that he'd given you permission.
Mike...
That's important. It's really important.
Mike, no, you, I asked you all, right, to release his information.
We didn't know he was okay with it.
You didn't, so, okay. All right. All right, we move on.
All of us are stupid. Just move on.
So Elliot Brown?
Because you don't remember the conversation.
No, you don't.
You clearly don't.
The text is posted, and you should read it. No, my text.
I read the text, but I didn't read it. He said if the council consents, then you can just read it.
But I asked you all to...
Can we, can we go move on?
We didn't know that he would have consented.
Can we move on?
Elliot? Hi.
Hi, I'm Elliot Brown, Charlottesville. Thank you for being transparent and standing up for what you believe is right. I really appreciate that.
Is the mic on?
I'm back to speak on white fragility again. White fragility is bullying. White fragility is when well-intentioned white people, like the majority of city council and me, unknowingly protect, maintain, and reproduce white supremacy. Let me share some of the ways white fragility shows up within your council. Not recognizing a 2-3 vote across racial lines most likely has something to do with your own white privilege and something not in the best interest of people of color is going, is happening. Dismissing feedback like this, telling your beha, telling you your behavior, words, actions, votes often have racist impact. Electing Nakia mayor after she ran a campaign on transparency and unmasking the illusion, then being vengeful when she follows through on these campaign promises. Kathy, siding with developers at most every juncture, dismissing the fact that these decisions are directly related to gentrification, forcing thousands of people, especially people of color, to leave our city. Mike, looking at leaking emails about Nakia to the press days before the election, defending some, a white person by saying his, he's a good person because, and not racist, because his wife is a multicultural person. Heather, your role in interim city manager's process. I too am guilty of white fragile racist behavior every day. It's uncomfortable, but I very much appreciate when people call me out on it. I'm not proud, it makes me feel bad, embarrassed, guilty, but I don't dismiss it. Instead, I aim to own it, explore it, educate myself, apologize to whoever I hurt, and make changes. Please take responsibility for your racism. I bought you each a book and had the community sign it for you guys. Please take the time to read it with an open mind and heart, and ask yourself, could the racist behaviors people are accusing you of be true? What does it mean for you if they are? It's probably uncomfortable. I challenge you to take on this discomfort and use it to spark some internal growth, while recognizing discomfort doesn't touch, your discomfort doesn't touch the discomfort and pain African Americans in Charlottesville have felt every day of their life. Ask yourself, is it possible that because you're white, there are racial dynamics you cannot see? When you think you're voting for something that will be helpful across racial lines, and Nakia and Wes are not voting this way, check in with yourself. Why do you think you have the knowledge to know it's helpful and not hurtful to communities of color? Ask yourself, how is voting the same way you do time and time again on things such as development and housing truly impacting community colors in Charlottesville? How are following the same processes and procedures that have been placed for decades and centuries impacting communities of color? I believe that all three of you want to see the dial move in the area of racial injustice. But it appears you're unable to separate your intention and its impact. By default, by default of being white, you do not have the context and/or understanding to know these answers without help from the outside. But lucky for you, you have dozens of black and brown people standing up right here, giving you this information on a regular basis, including two African-American colleagues willing to be straight with you. You have a leader calling you out on your racist behavior. Please stop feeling threatened, violated, or whatever you feel by the mayor's perspective, communication, and transparency. Instead, feel grateful you have this resource, growth opportunity, recognize the urgency, then use it to make Charlottesville the first anti-racist city in America.
Tony Wash.
Do you all want to respond?
Do I want to respond?
Good evening.
Good evening. I'm waiting for Ms. Rice. Madam Mayor, council members? This is like WrestleMania III arena here, or something. I would like to congratulate the council on appointing a city manager. Mr. Murphy is a very wise choice, since he has been in the city manager's office, well, let's say forever, and on several occasions served as acting city manager.
Hold on, let's just, we...
But there is one thing that is not clear to me, and that is the word interim. If this council does not have complete confidence in their appointment, then why make any appointment at all? I have researched the city records back as far as 1960s, and have spoken to previous city managers who still reside in the area, and I cannot find anywhere where the city of Charlottesville has ever hired an interim city manager. Mr. Murphy can do the job now, and he can do the job in the future. I quote, and I agree with a council member who said, "We now have a strong city manager, a strong fire chief, and a very strong police chief in place who can handle whatever comes his way to the city in the future." With the time I have left, I need to point out one present and growing problem that has already and can only continue to hurt the city. The problem is the constant feuding, bickering, backstabbing, conniving each and every one of you do with each other. It shows a complete total disrespect that you have for each other. You are acting worse than if you had a few Republicans on the council. I can't expect you all to hug and hang out together and even have each other over for dinner, just like I don't expect every city council vote to always be unanimous. But I do expect each of you to work together. Each of you were elected by the citizens of Charlottesville to serve and protect this city, and right now, you aren't doing either. If you all don't stop acting like children and start working together, you will not be able to solve the problems that face this city today and in the future. Thank you.
All right, Tanisha Hudson.
First off, I want to start off and say, Mike, you a whole grown ass man. I'm going to really need you to get your panties out of bunch. Stop leaking emails, okay, to news, to those people over there. Because you've done it on more than one occasion, and everybody get in trouble but you. All the black people get in trouble. But you'll never get in trouble. And see, here we are. Now, Mike, you know, I hate to bring you in on this, because you, you fresh to this. Not really, because you was assistant, so you kind of know. But listen, here we are worried about Jason Kessler, and you got to worry about the white supremacy that's displaying right up here on city council. We about to shut down a whole city, right? And I get safety is a concern, and, 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 Ms. Blackley, my girl, you know, she cool, we wobble together and everything. But listen, here we are, about to shut down a whole city, right, and let these people feel like they won.
That's right.
They don't scare my black ass. I can't speak for everybody else, but they don't scare me. They don't scare me. They don't scare me enough to the point, because they not going to come in... They don't scare me enough to the point, because they not going to come in Tonsler Park where we at. They not going to come in Hardy Drive where my people at. They not going to come in Prospect where we at. They not going to come on Sixth Street. But see, y'all afraid, but that is something that y'all breed it. And loo- look at what you doing up here. We keep going back and forth, who know who, who knew who and why? Why this man applied? The text message said he ain't want to release his information. He didn't want to do it. Why you keep sitting here going back and forth with Mayor Walker about his, his information was going to be released nor wasn't? He didn't want it to be released. Y'all three, because I'm, I'm, I'mma single y'all out this time. Y'all three, right here, y'all been a problem. And you just siding with the problem because you don't know where you standing. You knew that when you was running, Heather. You know, we was worried about you when you was running because we didn't know where you was going to stand. You so wishy-washy. And just slow down a little bit. We trying to, we trying to capture what you say so we can run back to it later on if we have to. So slow down a little bit. You, you speed up, that's that ci- that's that slick city stuff. See, you, when you from the city, you like to talk fast so people can miss some. Slow down, you in the south. But listen, Mike, do you have a problem with women? Are you a misogynist? Do you have a problem with women? Do you have a problem with people of color? Do you have a problem with showing respect? Because the way your head was just down, buddy, let me tell you something. My mama would have slapped life out of me if my head was down like that disrespecting somebody. You got to do better. And, and most of us, as much as they want to try to put it on West, a lot of this is your fault, if not all of it. You know that, right? We ain't worried about those tweets because we know people can say whatever they want to say. It's called freedom of speech. But you responsible for a lot of why these people keep choosing to come back to Charlottesville. You responsible for a lot that's still continuing to happen, and y'all, right here, y'all feed right into it. So I don't know if it, if this a gang up on black people thing, or if y'all trying to cause a divide between these two. But y'all make this city look real, real, real bad. And as much as people say throw the whole council away and start over. I, I think it's just some of y'all that got to go. Now, Mike, I'mma go ahead, give you a disclosure, okay? You the city manager now. Be going into a new August the 12th. We going to try not to shut our damn city down for races, okay? We going to try not to let these people think that they won. Because they didn't win. The only thing that happened last year that should have happened was the police should have did more, okay? And, and, and it, it wasn't necessary for no other changes to happen between last year and this year, but to make them do some damn work. That, that's the only change that needed to take place. And for y'all to shut streets down a little bit better than what y'all did last year.
Tanisha.
No other changes were necessary. So we not going to do this moving forward year to year to year shutting stuff down. We not even going to let them people think they won like that.
Thank you. Alright, Michael Payne. Is Michael here?
Hello, Michael Payne. I know there's a lot of vital issues being discussed tonight, but I just wanted to bring attention again to the city's housing needs assessment, which I think needs to be a turning point for the city and for what city council discusses and deliberates. I think we cannot lose sight of the fact that we now have concrete numbers, that there is a shortfall of 4,000 affordable housing units. And as a community beyond just council, I think we need to start having an honest conversation about the fact that if we're serious about meeting this need for people at zero to 30% of AMI, we simply do not have the policy tools we need to solve the affordable housing crisis right now. So we need to get serious about building a movement that builds beyond just city council, but to the state legislature, to pressure our state legislature to overturn or loosen up the Dillon Rule, to allow us to implement rent control and other policies that can allow us to have a community that is open to working people and that is not every day displacing more and more working-class residents. We need to think beyond, as, again, as a community, we need to think beyond the status quo and what we've normally been doing. And I think part of that has to include making, building a movement to fight for a public bond for public housing, which is in a state of disrepair. There is not going to be money coming from the federal government under the Trump administration. So I think it's an imperative that we build a movement for a public bond of at least $50 million as a down payment for the total amount of, uh, uh, starting to rebuild and expand our public housing stock. And I think, again, as a community, we need to be aware that we have a very limited timeframe of a few years. And if we don't get this right, this city is going to look like San Francisco, it's going to look like Arlington, where there is no working class that can live in this city. And as long as we may remain divided, as long as we are not keeping our eyes on the prize, as long as we are in a state of paralysis where we are not making decisions on affordable housing, the happiest people in this city are going to be the developers of projects like Dairy Central, the developers of behind projects like what's happening with the Main Street Arena, the developers of projects like the Dewberry Hotel, because they are going to be able to watch city council meetings and smile and say to themselves, another day's gone by where they're not discussing buy right development, where they're not discussing the Dillon Rule. They're not discussing what we're doing for the city. And they will continue to make enormous amounts of money. The city will continue to be sold off to wealthy developers, and we will blink in the city that we know will be gone in a matter of years.
And, um, Mike Walker.
Mr. Payne.
Did he come back? He just left.
Mr. Payne.
Yeah.
So I think, I think your point is.
So I think it's, yeah, it's, it's very important. I mean, the first number that I, um, said verbally to council in our first retreat was the $50 million that you just talked about, and that we cannot have the discussion about a million or two million or a couple of hundred thousand dollars here or there, and that to get this right, we're going to have to make a major investment and be committed to it. And every time that we've had conversations with, um, Grant Duffield, I have made sure that he understood that whatever the ask is, we need to figure it out.
So to that point, um, and Ms. Parker can, uh, attest to this. So the Housing Authority has been having, well, they have a redevelopment committee. And during our last Housing Authority meeting, Mr. Brandon Collins from, uh, from FAR Public Housing Association of Residents came up and discussed a plan in which, uh, he and other members of FAR have been working on, specifically looking at that number in terms of a bonding. There was a presentation that was provided, or a resolution that was provided to the Housing Authority Board in which we took under consideration, um, and we will be discussing it at our next Housing Authority Board meeting. But I would also encourage you to get with the redevelopment committee, as well as those who are working on this very issue in the Housing Authority, because the plan to a certain extent is being put in place. There's a lot of work that's being done to address these same issues further than we've ever been before, in my personal opinion. So again, I would encourage you to work with those folks who are, again, on the ground and doing this work. And I think Ms. Parker, um, as well as Ms. Turner can, can point you in the right direction.
But we do have a lot of work to do. I think the number I'm remembering, and my, um, memory may not be serving me best, um, today, but we're talking about about $600 million, right? Is that what, am I remembering that correctly?
Well, six, for what?
For the ren- the redevelopment of all the properties in the city, the public housing.
No, not that high. So what, what we had to do is, to get the real number of what we need is, we had to put out a RFQ, a request for qualifications, which we had, um, a few different vendors come back. And now we're putting together a RFP, where we're finalizing our RFP and our redevelopment plan. And that'll give us the exact number, but we're not trying to do it all at once.
Yeah.
The Housing Authority is trying to work piece by piece. And, I mean, again, we, we can go over all those details. The Housing Authority meets the fourth Monday of every month, right here in council chambers at 6:00 PM. And that's the place for us to really get into the nuts and bolts of what we're doing to address public housing and also the affordable housing, um, crisis that we have here in the city.
Sunny Rocker.
So, and thank you very much, Mr. Payne. I also want to ask you if you'd be willing to discuss that there's a whole range of, um, tools that we need to put on the table. Because when Mr. Bellamy and I have had conversations about, you know, what will it cost to have, to float a, a bond for $60 million, and it could be, it'll be a 10 cent on the, on the $100 tax increase. We've already got residents in our city who are having trouble paying the increases in, in property values, correct? So there's a whole slew of, of tax abatement and tax refund programs that also need to be part of this. And, and at the same time, to pay for that debt service, could we entertain the possibility of value capture? Getting the increment of those areas that are really high value, but then taking that value change and dedicating it to paying down the debt service of bonds for assisted housing? Because what that means is that we do need a blend of different kinds of housing stock.
I think, I think that's certainly the case, that we need a lot of different tools. And I think that's exactly why it's so important that it's beyond just council. And I think council, like, uh, Councilor Bellamy, uh, referenced has been doing a lot of positive big things that they haven't done in the past. But I think, um, but I think that's why it's important, beyond just council, as a community, we have to build a movement because I think if you look at the reality of that shortfall of 4,000 affordable housing units, uh, we, council, because of the state legislature, does not, is, has its hands tied by the state legislature and cannot solve this issue with the existing policies it has. And because of that, I think that's what makes it so challenging and why as a community we have to keep our eyes on the prize and build a movement, because there is no one policy that we're just waiting to be implemented, but council just won't do it. We don't know what it's going to take to fully meet that need of 4,000 units. And so I would agree, it's going to take all kinds of different policies. What that blend is and what that looks like, I don't know. But, um, we certainly as a community need to be having that conversation.
And I think with policy also means patience, right? Because, like, we've seen from the Housing Authority, just for us to be able to get to this point, it's been nearly two and a half years. And that's just for us to get to the point at which we can put together RFQs and RFPs and have our plan in place. So that doesn't mean that we're going to fix all of this, you know, by January, but I do like the fact that we're in the right direction. And I welcome you, as well as others, to join us in devising this plan and figuring out how we can move forward. And to that point, I know Mr. Murphy, as well as, um, Ms. Rice, have been talking about how we can put together our next joint session with the Housing Authority so that we can provide our update, or get our update from the Housing Authority, but also continue to devise our plan. And in that plan, it may very well be receiving, um, guidance on how we can look at implementing a bond similar to the number on which many have allocated for. I'd see Ms., uh, Ms. Oliver is, is here. She can also help you with that. And Mr. Collins is here himself, I just saw him on camera. So he can talk to you about the $50 million pledge himself. You say what? What she said?
Well, yeah, alright, cool. Well, again, I mean, I, I agree with all that, and I think that, again, the challenge is, I think city council and the Housing Authority have been doing a tremendous amount of work, and like you said, are in a place of, you know, moving towards a great place, making great progress. And the problem is, the federal government for years has not been investing in public housing. The state government is not being investing in public housing. And so I think our challenge is, how are we going to start to pressure the state legislature and move up? Because we can do everything we can as a city, and we need to, but that can only take us so far, and we, I think we need to start thinking about how are we going to scale up the state legislature.
But I think, um, I think that we also have to take some responsibility about a lot of the decisions that have been made in Charlottesville over time, and that have been made even since I've been on council, that, um, will create more of, uh, divide and displacement than be helpful. So some of that stuff we do have to own as, um, a council. And when you talk about building a movement, I hear that it's, we either will continue to do, um, things the way we have always done them, or we will have to do some things totally differently.
Well, and, and I, I hear that. To be clear, you know, that's absolutely not what I mean. I think we need to transform everything we do locally.
Yeah.
And, um, once we do that, see what position we're in. But I do think after we transform what we do locally, we may have more work to do beyond. But I agree, the first step has to be locally, because we haven't done nearly all we can do locally. But, thank you.
Alright, thank you. Don Gathers.
So what?
Oh, the, the work session for the, oh.
Okay. Good evening.
Good evening.
This is exactly why people all over the city are canceling their HBO and Cinemax and, and Star subscriptions. You can just watch this. This, this, this is exactly why. You all cannot sit here and be taken aback or, or pretend to be surprised by Mayor Walker's actions when this is exactly the platform that she ran on. She promised you, she told you right up front to expect transparency, to expect that she was going to deliver to the citizens exactly what we were asking her for. But now it's a complete surprise to everybody. The city manager selection process, appointment process, anointing process, it was completely flawed. There's no, no other way about that. That's got to be fixed. Mike Murphy, God bless you. I, I appreciate you, you, your willingness to step in and take this, but we're right where we should have been right in the beginning. If you had just taken a moment to think about maybe just appointing someone to the position to get us through this coming weekend, and then begin all the process of searching and, and, and putting someone in place, we wouldn't be where we are now. You have people in place, you had a couple of people that were assistant city managers, even another department head would have been just fine. Just put someone in place, get us through this weekend, get us through this month, and then we can begin the selection process. Was that not ever a thought of anyone's? Something else, please, as much as possible, try, try to not have votes on city council without having the full council present, especially for important matters that, that, that will directly affect the, the, the public and the community. Even if it's just through a conference call, we need five votes on matters that, that directly affect the, the, the public. And everything that you vote on in one way or the other directly affects the public. Now, I understand the necessity and, and the, um, the importance of keeping the city safe, but right now we're in a hostage situation. It's, it's like there's a curfew, curfew being implemented at high noon, and no one is to be on the streets past that time. That's where we're headed. And I, we, and I, and I've shared this with, with some of the police officers, we don't want to go from where we were last year and do a complete 180 where we're overpoliced. That, that's, that's the worst possible scenario. We, we, we definitely don't need that. It's got to fall somewhere in the middle. Handle the situations that need to be handled immediately when they need to be handled. Let's not allow the ninth gate of hell to open up again this year and all the minions come pouring out of there. Handle what needs to be handled, but we don't need a paramilitary mindset while we're doing that. And I still need to know, after the collaboration and all the, the, the kumbaya moment where we had everyone assembled here at the last meeting, it still hasn't been told us who is in charge? Who's the point person? If there is a situation and there's disagreement amongst the, the collaborators that, that assembled here with us that, that, that day, who will make the ultimate decision as to what needs to be done and how it needs to be done? The citizens need to know that.
Thank you.
I think, Mr. Gather, that, that's clear that it's the city manager who will, uh, make a policy decision. As far as a tactical decision, that is the individual law enforcement agencies.
It's, it's Mike Murphy, the city manager.
So if there's disagreement amongst the ranks, he makes the ultimate decision?
That, that, that's not what unified command is, no. The, the city manager is the policy decision maker. And so if there is a question about, uh, you know, should there be a state of emergency? Is there a question about, um, giving the police chief the authority to, uh, have a curfew, which was raised? Those are things that come through the city manager as the director of emergency management. The city manager does not tell law enforcement. The city manager does not tell law enforcement officials how to act on the ground. It doesn't say, this is what kind of gear people are going to wear, or how many people will be deployed to a certain area. Those are operational decisions, and the police chief for each of the departments that will be represented will make those decisions. And the intent of the commanders has been displayed, or has been shared with every person who will be on the ground that weekend.
Okay. So, let me, let me put it this way. If the state police commander and Chief Brackney have a disagreement as to whether or not the citizens of this city should be gassed or not, who makes the decision as to who's right and who's wrong? Because I don't want us to end up as we did back in July of last year, when citizens were gassed, but the Klan was allowed to just leave without, without any repercussions whatsoever.
And they wore masks.
That's not how the system works in unified command. And so, what need, what you need to understand is that there is one plan, agreed to by the agencies who will serve on the ground that day. Okay? That's not true. That's not what the plan was last year. We didn't use the National Incident Management System. We didn't have one plan for all the troops on the ground. We have one plan. Each, each of those officers is responsible to the training that they've received and to their chief of police, their incident commander.
Okay. But, and I don't want to go in the wayback machine, but apparently last year, Chief Thomas had one mindset, but Gary Pleasance had a different mindset. So, again, if there's a clashing of, of, of ideals and idealism, who makes the decision as to what's right, what's wrong, what's going to actually happen? I don't care about who's right or who, who's wrong. We need to do what's right, and we need to know, first and foremost, that the citizens are going to be protected, that we won't be overpoliced, that we won't have the, the military vehicles come parading through our town again. We need to know, do we need to be, be, be wearing our gas masks, or at least have them present, because we know it's against the law to wear masks in public? Do we at least, at least need to have them public? Because, again, we don't want to go from zero to 180. Something's got to fall somewhere in between.
Alright. Kim Spalding.
Based on training experience and knowledge base. That's the program.
Some of what I'm going to say is a little redundant, considering what's gone on tonight. My name is Kim Spalding, I live at 912 Ridge Street, Charlottesville. I'm also the precinct chair of Tonsler. I received an email this weekend from Senator Doug Jones of Alabama, in support of Tim Kaine, and he said, "As a US attorney, attorney, I prosecuted two of the KKK members responsible for the 1963 bombing of a church in Birmingham, Alabama, that killed four little black girls. The men who planted that bomb wanted to crush the hope rising within the African-American community. This pattern of violence following surges of hope continues today. We saw this when white supremacists descended on Charlottesville. The way to stop this is to stand up and never stop fighting for equality." Tim Kaine says, "Equality is America's North Star." So, that's the end of what he said. On August 11th and 12th, a light was shone on the extreme inequalities for our black community of Charlottesville. Charlottesville calls itself a sanctuary city, a city of inclusiveness, but still, white oppression prevails. A little history reminder, at the end of the Civil War, 54% of the population of Charlottesville were former slaves. They worked very hard to establish businesses and a school to remake their lives. But with Jim Crow, the Depression, redlining, and ignorance of segregation, and Vinegar Hill, a lot of those gains were lost. 160 years later, only 18% are still here because of the lack of opportunities and acceptance. Last November, Nakia Walker received the highest number of votes to serve on city council. And then, on January 1st, a vote of four, one, by you, was for her to be our mayor. Seven months into her first term, some of you are trying to silence her by misquotes and by asking her to recuse herself from voting. That's very disappointing. The dialogue on race funded by the city points out clearly that the white population has a huge advantage or privilege over our people of color. Yet, you have decided to gang up on your mayor, who was born and raised here and knows firsthand the inequalities that exist. I keep hoping that Charlottesville can be an example of that North Star of equality that Senator Kim, Tim Kaine speaks of so frequently. I want you to reevaluate your decision-making with a focus on, how can our decisions affect positively the most disenfranchised? Peace begins when poverty ends. We all want peace. Let's end oppressive and unjust actions in our town. Thank you.
Marcia Guyer.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Councilors, I'm Marcia Guyer, and I came to speak about climate change, and this isn't the night to do that. It really isn't. So, I just want to bring to your attention something that came in the mail to me today, the latest issue of, of The Economist, which is a really good news magazine. And their, their front page issue is, "In the Line of Fire: Losing the War Against Climate Change." We need to think about that. I'm going to come back another time. Okay?
Are you sure?
Sorry? So, I'm Marcia Guyer, I live at 1008 Petri Lane in Charlottesville, and I'm one of the leaders of the, of the local climate movement. The Strategic Energy Initiative that are part of tonight's consent agenda are very well-targeted to important ways to reduce greenhouse gases. The repurposing of $360,000, $367,000 looks good. The city could do more in another area of low-hanging fruit. The roofs of all the city buildings, including our schools, could be assessed for housing solar arrays. Albemarle County pioneered this in the state of Virginia, as far as the, the way, the financing that made it possible for them to do, I think it was seven schools initially. And Albemarle is again looking at its schools for a second series of solar roof conversions, where new school roofs have recently replaced older ones. A power purchase agreement bid competitively will lower and stabilize the cost of electricity while also transitioning to clean energy. Many new solar roofs would be a highly visible step, showing the city leading by example in a very positive direction against a very scary issue. A second leadership step the city could and should take is stepping up the official target for reducing greenhouse gases from 30% reduction by 2050 to 80% reduction by 2050. Among cities of the southeast, an 80% reduction is the target chosen by two-thirds of cities that have a climate target. It's also the minimum amount that science has said is needed to avoid worldwide catastrophic climate change. This is what we have to do, if we are serious as a species about survival. After decades of science, scientists' warnings, we see that a variety of climate catastrophes are happening around the country and around the world, not to our grandchildren someday, but to people alive now. I ask council to put the protection of our environment from worsening climate change on your front burner, to lead all sectors of our city visibly and by example, and to pick up the pace of the city's climate action. You could be helped with this heavy responsibility, because I know you've got a lot on your plates, if council created a mechanism for Charlottesville climate activists to contribute from the large array of sources we follow to forming the city's climate agenda. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Walker, may I make a comment?
Ms. Guyer, thank you for speaking, and I, I look forward to meeting with you. We've been trying to make that arrangement. And I believe that Charlottesville High School does have solar panels on, on its roofs, and that, that our facilities management division actually has a team now of people that are capable of installing solar panels on our public buildings and our school buildings. So, we have made a commitment that when, when the time comes and it's appropriate to make that physical change, they, they are put, put on. So, that, that we are already positioned to do the-
You're on it.
Yes, we're on that. And so I would, I would, I would love to have us become zero carbon. And so I, I, I think sustainability and equity need to go hand in glove.
Oh, yeah. Usually, the people who suffer the most from climate change are the poor and the disenfranchised. We're seeing that in states where they want to put the compressor station for the new pipeline in Buckingham County. And who, who gets punished the most by high electricity bills? People who can't afford it for their air conditioning, and so, and so on. So, now, I didn't say 100% because unfortunately, in the South, where utilities control so much of what's possible to do or not possible to do, I think that 100% might not be doable. And I would hate for us to say, oh, let's just say 100% and that, but we, no, we're not going to try and really do that. But the technology is there, or it's coming along. And what's missing is, is the political will. So, you know, Charlottesville should do absolutely everything it can. I just used three minutes, I had timed myself at home, the best I could. I'm not out of ideas, I'm just out of time.
Thank you.
My name is Linda Goldstein. Am I in the speaker?
Yes.
I live at 1009 Birdwood Road here in the city. Charlottesville made some horrific mistakes last year. I would like to believe that our community could learn from mistakes and move ahead in a productive way. To me, it doesn't seem like it's happening. Closing the city pools and rec centers does not keep us safer. Preventing businesses from thriving does not keep us safer. Closing the library, this is my perspective, does not keep us safer. Encouraging our faith communities to cancel services does not keep us safer. Please don't tear our community apart again. Please don't block off the city and close down the things that help sustain us. Building a fortress this year to make up for no policing last year doesn't solve any problems. It allows to unite the right folks to win again. Our community wins when the children have safe places to read and play. Our community wins when we have a vibrant economy. Our community wins when we have places to openly worship. Our community wins when we can move around freely and safely. People with both good intentions and bad intentions are going to find ways to come downtown regardless of what you do to limit access. Please don't close down our community out of fear. Fear is a dangerous thing that fosters violence. Tensions are already high, and the planned actions are only going to increase them. In this environment, violence will much more easily erupt. Yes, have police presence. Yes, have emergency plans in place, but don't put up blockades and close down the activities that are an integral part of our lives. Let us move around freely, enjoying our weekend. Let us have easy access to the parks, restaurants, stores, movies, and places of worship downtown. We can be vigilant without mass restrictions of movement and activities. Thank you.
Harold Foley.
Harold Foley, civil rights and justice organizer for Legal Aid. I give my time to Marissa Hirsch, please.
Name, Marissa?
Hello, everybody, thank you for your time. First, I'm my mother. Thank you, Nakia, because you're doing it for us. I represent the People's Coalition, so if y'all are available, please stand up. So, dear city council, the People's Coalition is made up of community groups and individuals working to achieve racial injustice here in Charlottesville. Through this letter, we seek to share our concerns about the ways in which recent and longstanding practices and, and decisions by law enforcement reflects its failure to treat Charlottesville low-income, black, or brown communities in a fair and, and just manner. Truly, provide for their safely, safety, sorry.
Bless you.
Given these concerns, the lack of trust that exists between CPD and Charlottesville low-income and black residents, as we also, including requests for actions that, sorry, Jesus.
You're fine. Take your time.
Yes, Lord. Sorry. Including requests for actions, we would like to, the CPD, CFD, to take during the weekend of August 10th through the 12th, 2018, and in the long term, to guarantee that law enforcement honors its duty to ensure the well-being and safety of low-income and black residents in Charlottesville. A, the weekend of August 10th through the 12th, 2018, we are concerned by the many communication barriers between the low-income communities of Charlottesville. CPD, CFD, regarding their plans for this weekend, we do not understand the reluctance to release specific plans about how CPD, CFD intend to protect low-income families against the right, alt-right, sorry, I need to say that. We are also concerned about the role the CPD, CFD intend to play during the weekend, considering the aggressive law enforcement tactics used toward the low-income, black communities in 2017 while the Ku Klux Klan rallied, during the utter failure of law enforcement to protect the same residents with violence by the alt-right during the weekend of August 2017. We request, the police chief and fire chief unequivocally state that CPD, CFD intend to protect low-income, black residents, particularly residents of Friendship Court, public houses, from acts of violence, intimidations, or threats from the alt-right. Two, agree that law enforcement will not itself commit any such acts against law, low-income, or black residents- law enforcement will not itself commit any such acts against law, low-income, or Black residents. Police will not patrol on-site within a public housing community. We ask this to avoid negative police residence or interactions. Police may patrol nearby, but not on-site. Members of the Coalition feel strongly that the presence of the alt-right should not be used as an excuse for police to contact with residents, and CPD officials should instruct other officers as such. For Crescent Hall, Sixth Street, South First Street, and West Haven, on-site patrolling be conducted exclusively by Millennium Security, who CRHA plans to have present. We would like Millennium Security to serve as the point contact for the police with respect to the activity of many of these communities. Police barricades be set up around each of the following public houses, including Friendship Court. Special attention be paid to ensure safety to the Rose Hill community. On-street parking be completely restricted on Second Street from Water Street to the Ix Park, Garrett Street the entire length, including Levy to Avon, Fourth Street, Sixth Street from Garrett Street to Elliott, Monticello from Ridge to Avon, First Street from 1,001st Street all the way across to Elliott Avenue to Crescent Hall. Millennium Security, CRHA, coordinate local access for traffic into and out of Crescent Hall from Second Street to South First Street. CPD and CFD treat street medics and local observers with respect. Allow them to carry out their functions. B, long-term law enforcement practices and decision-makings. We are concerned by longstanding practices, policy decisions that expose low-income and Black residents of Charlottesville to be disproportionate and harmful law enforcement contact. We request CPD, CFD, present the People's Coalition with a comprehensive plan detailing the steps they will take. Diversity-
Yeah, you can wait. Go ahead and finish.
Diversity, the CPD and CFD, and ensure that every officer responder, including new recruits and current members, receive racial sensitivity, de-escalation, and strategies for youth training, and racial profiling of residents in low-income and predominantly Black or Brown communities in Charlottesville by CPD. And CPD's discriminatory stop and freeze practice, wherever over 70% of the stops are Black residents who make up the 70% of this population. Reform and reform the CPD complaint process to make it more transparent, accessible, and orient toward meaningfully and timely resolution of civilian complaints. And last but not least, assist in creating a positive, progressive community safely initiative within low-income or Black communities driven by the residents, one that acknowledges the ways in which traditional policing practices undermine community safety, and includes suggestions for how to shift responsibly for the community's safety away from the law enforcement.
Thank you.
Thank you, Marissa. So, I'm gonna let you know that the chief has this letter. She was giving this letter to her on the 27th, and the chief of Fire has this letter also.
Thank you. The last name is Reynolds? It's not clear, the writing. Oh, no, okay.
I just have a few words to say.
Can you come to the mic?
Oh, I'm sorry. Excuse me. I just have a few words to say. I just, I moved here in 2005 to move to a diverse community, and I'm so glad to live here in Charlottesville, because I've met so many wonderful people. But it hurts, and I'm feeling the pain in my heart right now. I mean, for the past almost full hour, listening to a few people, it just, it's painful. Just knowing what happened last year, and having it to be allowed to happen again, I just hope that things will not be as extreme. I mean, it just, I wish... Let me just, let me write, excuse me, let me read my few words that I wrote a little while ago. "I am so for free speech, but point-blank hate should not be. This is a very caring city, so we all need to stand together against the wrong that needs to stop being. Please." And that's all I have to say. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Rosia Parker? Good afternoon, good evening.
I can't understand how we're going from a... We're going... Hello, my name is Rosia Parker. We're going from a stand-down to a shutdown. What is the true definition of protect and serve? To continuously victimize the victims of A-11 and 12, predominantly the whole community over the whole period of May through August 2017, the whole summer of hate? To shut the city down does not justify, it does just that. To take away parks and wrecks from the families, and especially the children, victims again. Why should they have to keep suffering? They don't deserve to be punished, nor have they, their end of the summer disrupted just before school. Family functions? No returns on shelter expenses, nor giving kids free swim all of September will fix the situation at hand. We as citizens deserve to be in unity amongst and throughout the city. You are not allowing the cities to celebrate or assemble in our city that we defended, while the state of Virginia law enforcers abused us and allowed us to be abused, and over the year of being continuously abused in the courtrooms by our judges. You are still punishing this community. No protection, now criminalized. Resistance or resilience toward us? What is that? Which one is it? I am very appalled of the actions of our city officials, shutting down the whole city in response of A-10 through A-12 anniversary weekend. I am a Black mother, grandmother, upbringing the next generations. I feel violated that I am not allowed to counter protest if need be to make sure my voice is heard under my First Amendment right. As a victim of J-8, A-11, and A-12, 2017, my city officials did not protect me, or my family, or my community. So, therefore, it's my duty to fight, and it's my duty to win. Give me liberty or give me death. I demand freedom for the injustice.
Thank you. Katrina Turner?
Katrina Turner City. On July 8th, when the Klan came to town, instead of facing the hate that invaded our city, the police chose to face the citizens. And on top of that, the citizens were gassed for no reason whatsoever. August 11th, the alt-right was escorted into this city by Charlottesville Police Department while holding lit torches. After reaching the Thomas Jefferson statue, they began to assault students and professors with those lit torches, and also descended upon the church full of people of all nationalities and religions with those same lit torches, while the Charlottesville Police Department stood down. Even after everything that happened on the 11th, Jason Kessler and his terrorist followers were still allowed to have their rally on the 12th, which resulted in many citizens being mentally, physically, and emotionally scarred for life, and Heather Hare losing her life. The police stood down on August 12th, and now, instead of protecting the citizens this year, the city decides to shut the city down. You cannot get it right if you don't protect the citizens. Give us the chance to walk our streets with the protection Jason Kessler and his terrorists had. Chief Brackney gave us a promise that she would be out there on the streets with us on that day. How is she gonna be on the streets with us on that day if they're making it so difficult for us to even be out there on that day? With everything they had last year, all the threats that we gave City Council last year, and they did not shut the city down, I want to know, is there a credible threat on this city? The reason they are shutting this city down? Is that something that they cannot tell us? We gave you all, all the threats last year, and you didn't listen. Are we in danger, or do you just, does the police department just not want to do their job again? Because they should be standing by us, protecting us, instead of shutting this city down. They gave the alt-right from May to August to do whatever they wanted to do in this city, and they just allowed it, time after time. Now, here comes the anniversary, and y'all aren't even gonna let us stand up for our city this year. Why? You're talking about safety if it were not. For the police standing down last year, the citizens would have been safe. We protected this city last year, and we want to do the same thing this year, in closing all the roads down and making it difficult to where we can't even park to get to downtown. What is this saying? You're saying that Charlottesville is cowards. We're not cowards. Y'all might be cowards. The city who's shutting this city down might be cowards, but we're not. And do y'all really want us to look like the city who ran from the white supremacists, who ran from Jason Kessler? That's what we're gonna look like if you all shut this city down. So, you all need to do something better than shutting our full city down. Yes, we have asked for safety, but it's your fault we were not safe last year. Not all.
I'm trying to understand. We're not discouraging people from coming downtown, and by-
Yes, you are.
We're providing a space for people to come where there isn't vehicular traffic, where people could be injured.
Jefferson is closed. That's where the majority of people parked to march to the park last year. Where are we gonna park at? If you want us to defend, if you say we can defend our city, where are we gonna park to do it? We're gonna have to pay transportation to get to the city. Come on.
You're holding a hostage.
There's nowhere to park in the city.
Mr. Murphy, I think Mr. Murphy's gonna respond.
So, I just want to be clear, Ms. Turner. You can park in Water, in the Water Street Garage, on the ground lots. It is-
How many people are gonna be here, Mr. Murphy? Is that garage gonna fill? Is that garage gonna hold everybody who wants to stand up for the city? No, it's not. We needed all types of places to park last year.
As Chief Brackney said, in the meeting we were in earlier today, right? We're encouraging people to be wherever they choose to be, right? And if you choose to be downtown, the perimeter was established to keep people safe to be downtown, because we believe that's where the most people want to be. And then, it's not acceptable, particularly after last year, for us not to set up a secure perimeter so that cars will not interact with pedestrians.
Was there a credible threat? Was there a credible threat?
Yes, please, tell them.
Was there a credible threat, the reason the city is shut down?
We deserve to know.
We're not gonna share the intelligence that's going. It's just not, absolutely not gonna happen.
Tell citizens that we're under attack, danger. Really? Really?
As we have said-
We were under attack last year, but y'all can't give us the reason.
Ms. Turner, as we have said in probably, I don't know, a dozen community briefings, it is the intent of this plan to protect the city in the worst-case scenario and to be flexible.
But you're not telling us why you're protecting us like this. You're not telling us.
Well, can I, so I cannot answer your question. I'll say that. But what I hope I can share is that earlier in the year, I did, as from my position, have to sign a paper for Mr. Jones at the time, which was very clear about the liability that from the state level that administration would face if they divulged information that wasn't public. So, I will say that I don't know, I don't know what the information is. I'm just telling you what the paper that was presented to me, that even for him to receive the information, whatever that is, and for me, I would have never signed that paper. I made sure even in that, that it wasn't even a space on that paper since my signature was on it for my name to go in the slot. And we had a very detailed conversation, you know, about it. So, if I would have been presented with something like that, I would have had to turn it down, because I know personally, I would have needed some legal assistance if I had information that, you know, people could potentially get hurt and that we were protecting. And I had this full conversation with him. So, I think that, you know, I don't know all the information that the admin, you know, the fire chief, the city management, I don't know what that information. I really know about as much information that you have. But I can say, based on just how the government at every level is appearing to work, that there are restrictions on people, and I just hope that people can hear that. Mayor Walker, may I say something? And I do want to, and Ms. Turner, I was at the same meeting you were at this afternoon, and the intelligence is coming from all different directions. It's still coming from the public. We've had people come and give us photocopies of what they see on their feeds, on their Facebook posts. That's being taken in, and it's being given to the police. We're getting emails all the time. Just this past week, Mr. Murphy, a terrible email that he was passed on directly to the police. So, and then, everything that we're hearing from Portland, Oregon at this point, because of the protester encounter protest or clashes there, it's spilling out all over the country.
Nazis, did you put somebody in a hospital? The cops did in Portland.
So, what we're saying is, we're getting all the intelligence of those groups that are gathering there, and-
That's what the police can do.
You're asking us what the credible threat is, and that's what I'm just conveying.
Why is Ix Park open for vendors? Is that what you guys said? Is Ix Park open for the vendors?
Yes.
Why are we accommodating vendors, but we're not accommodating people who have children, who want to go somewhere? Like, I don't want to march, but I do want to forget about August 12th in a different kind of way. I want to celebrate with my family, but I don't have the money to leave town. Why is Smith, why is Smith Pool closed? Why is Tonsler closed? Why are all these places closed? Like, we're being held hostage. You know what would help us feel better? Arrest Kessler, indict him. Indict him for conspiracies.
And I will just add to Counselor Galvin's comment, that that was not a threat for citizens, that that was directly towards council members. And so, I just wanted to make that clear. Thank you for that. Yeah, thank you.
They know what he gonna do.
Yeah, now they know the city is shut down.
But we don't know what they gonna do, because they know when everyone looking crazy on, on, on that day. What's sealed off, what's not open, what's closed.
So, when they start going around the city to everywhere you didn't close, then what's gonna happen?
So, I think it's important to note that, like, what y'all are feeling is valid, right? And I don't think we've done a good enough job as a council, or even as a community. I think sometimes when people watch these meetings, or they're just listening, they think that, oh, this is just like chaos, or people are yelling from the crowds, or whatever. But people are actually hurting. And when you hear, like, I mean, Louisa's, her sons are in my academy. I see them every day. And when she says that she doesn't have the money to take her kids out of town, like- And when she says that she doesn't have the money to take her kids out of town like so many other people are going to do this weekend because they don't want to deal with it. And she feels as if, she feels hostage because many of the parks are closed or the decisions that we've made, understandably because there's a safety issue. We have to take that into account. I think, like, that's very valid. So what are her options in regards to what, what she'd be able to do this weekend? And I think, and I think that, hold on, hold on, hold on, hold on. And what, what I think she's looking for, and she's a representation of many members of the community, they're looking for, what are the alternatives for them to do this weekend? Because they don't want to just be stuck in the house. They don't want to feel like prisoners. And they don't want to feel like this is just this God-forsaken day that they have to think about negative things forever. What do we do for them? Well, let's, let's let them, I mean, are there any, I, I know it's a delicate situation, but is there any, what we can respond? That's an idea.
Are you ready?
That's actually a good idea.
The, the city has posted on our website a number of events that are happening in the community. Not all of them-
Hold on, hold on, hold on, hold on.
That, that, they are not city events. They are community-driven events. They come from the community. And so I just want to be clear that there are things for people to do. Listen. When we are briefed by law enforcement and we talk about the available resources, people working 12-hour shifts for at least 72-hour period, we do not have the resources to also staff parks in the way that the community is requesting. I think we have already acknowledged that we do not want the same plan as last year.
So, and I just have, I don't know. Again, I think we don't, I mean, this is, it's the anniversary, right? I don't even like saying that. I mean, if you, if, if the city put on its website that you can go to the Alamo, there is no way I wa, I'm walking into that building with my kids to sit in a building where people know that I'm gonna be present or that you all are gonna be present. So I think, again, what, we, we don't know. We don't, and that's the thing. I think we don't know any of this. But I'm just saying personally, if someone started listing, listing, listing areas that we could go to, I'm sure that there would be many people, and I would include myself, that would just opt out of going to those places. It wasn't safe. I was out last year. No one should have to endure that. And frankly, I wish, I will stay at home, okay? And anybody know me know that's where I want to stay anyway. So, but I understand the need to, you know, make sure people understand that that behavior is not behavior that we're gonna tolerate, right? And that if you're at home and you back down from it, like what permissions that, does that give them? But I also think that while we're trying to think through this, that we also have to be sure, you know, we've, the, the safest place that people think about in the world is where? A church. And we know what happened in South Carolina. We know those nine lives, you know, those people did not think that their lives were gonna end in the church that day. And you just never know. And it's not something with all the uncertainties that we're facing that you want to be wrong on. I don't know the answers. I don't have the information. I cannot answer your questions. But I know that everyone in this room, we do not want to end up here or end up anywhere the next meeting and anyone regret a decision that we made. And I would say that if the only thing that we are upset about is that we, we couldn't do what we wanted to do, and that's for all of us for one weekend, you know, that we couldn't, couldn't go to certain places, that's not a stay home. That's just a, you may have to limit your options. And I'm hearing from a lot of different areas of the city where you, you know, you're expressing concern about, you know, being able to make sure that you're, you're heard, you're able to, you know, enter, you can drive there, that, you know, it's safe at the same time. There are other people that are asking questions about whether they'll be able to go to the grocery store and walk their dog, open their business. There are different people all over the community that their focal point during this weekend, you know, is very different. Some I understand because of the li, life I've lived, others I just don't get it all. But I think the point is that if we spend our energy, which I don't think we've done a good job of this year figuring out how to truly heal this division so we don't keep ending up in this place where we're doubting even ourselves, that this, it, it will continue. And it's a really tough situation. It's a really tough situation that we're in.
I can't agree with that because like, I don't want to feel like, like, I'm gonna be out Saturday. And I, like, I don't, I don't want to feel like I don't have the right. And I, I don't feel this way. I mean, I understand the safety perspective.
So why are you saying it if you don't feel that way?
Because, because I don't feel, no, I don't, I feel where you, I understand where you're coming from.
No, I'm just asking you, like, your concern right now, like, how do you feel about what you know? Because I think one of the things we have to do-
We should be able to go out.
So no, they are not saying anything that I heard that people won't be able to go.
No, I feel like if people saying that they want, like, we can't allow this paralysis, we can't paralysis by fear. We can't have, like, because we have a threat of something or potentially this may happen, that we say, well, nothing should happen. I just don't agree with that. If people want to be able to go to the park, then like, they need to be able to go to the park. If they feel like they want to go and walk down the street, then they need to be able to go and walk down the street. Like, that, that is letting them win.
But I, so my question to that is that nothing that I've heard has said that you can't go. So now I'm gonna have to share what I'm hearing at work, right? I'm put, I, oh, I didn't read my disclosure. Hold on. Sorry, I just remembered. So before I say this. So I am an employee of the City of Charlottesville within the City Parks and Recreation Department. I hereby declare that during city council meetings and discussions relating to recruitment, hiring and appointment of a city manager, transactions, including an interim city manager, I have been advised by written opinion of the Charlottesville Commonwealth Attorney dated July 27, 2018, to participate in the transaction so long as I comply with the declaration requirements of subsection H of the Virginia Code 2.2-3115. The Commonwealth Attorney assumed without deciding that I have a personal interest, the transaction as determined by the Virginia Code 2.2-3101. The nature of the personal interest that may be affected by the transaction is my job as recreation aide employed by the city within the Department of Parks and Recreation. Because of the salary or compensations or employee benefits that I receive as a city employee in excess of $5,000 annually. However, if I do have a personal interest, I have been advised by the Commonwealth Attorney that I am not necessarily prohibited from participating in the transaction because I'm a member, I'm a member of an occupation, recreation aides or group of city employees of three or more persons, the members of which are similarly affected by the transactions. So as long as I make this disclosure, I hereby affirm that I am able to participate in the transactions fairly, objectively, and in the public interest. I have delivered a signed copy of this written declaration to the clerk of council and to the office of the city manager, which technically has not happened yet. This is a signed copy that's going. Those officials' offices shall retain and make this declaration available for the public inspection for a period of five years as required by Virginia Code 2.2-3115. Following my delivery of this disclosure to the clerk and city manager, I understand that I am also required to verbally disclose this public interest at each meeting of the city council in which the transactions are discussed. And the clerk of council is required to make note of my verbal disclosure in the minutes of such meeting. My verbal disclosure will announce publicly that I may have a personal interest in the matter being discussed by council and the, and interested parties of the clerk of council to obtain details set forth within this written disclosure. And that was dated July 30, 2018. And I should have read that before I had discussions about the city manager. So I'm sorry. I'm in violation of disclosing that. So back to the, you know, conversations that have been going on that I have been made aware of there. It would be hard to staff some of the positions within Parks and Recs, talking about like the, the pools. And this is not, you know, the staff saying stay home and don't come. That is happening in some respects. But it's also been told, and I haven't talked to everybody that works there, so this is just the information that I'm hearing, that there are a lot of, especially like our lifeguards who are all, you know, young, high school and college kids who are saying that they will not be able, you know, to work. And that decision is made by, you know, their guardians, from my understanding. So that is some information that I do have insight on. And so it would be difficult for, you know, the Parks and Rec Department to possibly staff three centers, Smith, Washington, and Honesty, and be able to open it whether the city declared it, you know, asked them to close or the director of Parks and Rec, because we could potentially not have anybody at work to, that, and if no one was at work, you wouldn't be able to open it anyway.
But that's not their fault.
That's not whose fault.
That's not the citizens' fault that city staff won't have people to open it. Like, we still have to-
No, Wes, you, did you hear what I just said?
I heard what you said, but that's still, and even what you said, that's not their fault. They're still saying that we still, what they still are saying is that they want to be able to go to some park, have somewhere to go. So we're saying out of all of the employees that we have in the city, we can't put a group of staff at one park for people to be able to go to.
And I'm not saying, what I'm, so what I just said, and I'll try to say it again clearly, is that from my understanding, there are parents who have made decisions about their kids, that they are not allowed to work that day. So that's, that's what I'm saying. If, in the work that I am, the, the knowledge that I have, in the morning, when I show up at work at 5:30, if we do not have enough guards to staff the pool and keep everybody safe, nobody can get in the pool. That's any morning. So what I'm saying is that if people are pulling their children out, young high school students and college students who are most of our lifeguards, right? There is no way whether the director of Parks and Rec made a decision or not for the pools to be staffed. Now, your question is something that you would have to ask them directly. Is it possible that you have enough people to staff at least one pool? I don't know. I haven't had any of these conversations with Brian Daley. I'm just telling you the information that I've heard from the other end.
Understood. But you don't need a lifeguard at Tonsler for the splash park?
And may I, I ask a question of, of, of Mr. Murphy? Because I, I'm hearing some confusion about regular city staff to keep a facility open. And then I also am hearing questions about whether we have enough police to keep those public spaces safe. And my understanding is that we do not have enough police to, to keep all these places safe because we have to deploy the, the offices that we have in the key locations where we think there's gonna be the most danger. That's a different issue than not having staff from Parks and Rec, as I understand it, to, to be at these places, to open them and, and to, you know, make sure that people have access to the, the, the clubhouse's or whatever it is that they want to go to. So am I getting that right?
No, I mean, my point is just talking about this one issue within the broader issue.
And that makes absolute sense, that there's no staff.
I would say it is a very clear and, not an or, that it was the combination of availability of staff resources, the need for some of those facilities to be used.
Hold on, hold on, hold on, hold on, let them talk.
We know when the decision is made that there is a lack of law enforcement to protect additional areas. That we have, in addition to the deployment of the plan, a number of soft targets that are already established by community events that have been planned outside of the city's control. We have a number of employees who will not report for duty in Parks and Recreation. And there is the matter of not just community safety, which is of the utmost importance, but also employee safety. And I think it's one thing to say, you know, for police and fire, what they need to do to respond, right? But to tell teenage lifeguards that they need to be in a pool that then becomes, becomes potentially a soft target for people is not acceptable.
Thank you.
That is entirely inaccurate. The parks are open.
Well, that's what we, that's what you needed to explain. Because we're thinking that the parks are completely closed, like we have no access to the park. That's what we're trying to bring to y'all's attention, to give us an understanding while we keep asking-
If somebody wants to go to a park, a playground, come downtown. Nobody has said that you can't do that.
But you said Parks and Recs are closed, so if Parks and Recs are closed-
Facilities.
Right, so that's what you need to explain so people can have an understanding. When you saying to shut down the Parks and Recs and all of that, that means we're thinking, okay, Washington Park is closed. Tonsler Park is closed. All of those are closed. Yeah, but that's what I'm saying. So we're not saying when y'all say Parks and Rec, y'all are not saying which ones are specifically closed for this reason and these ones are open that you can go there. But it's sad that we have to sit here and argue as a community to define what is open, what's not open, to give these people a whole platform of a plan of what we're doing as a community amongst one another, when they gonna get to the point where they gonna come when y'all least expect it because y'all are so overwhelmed playing from the mistakes that was made last year. And then y'all didn't even have enough time to speak with the community to see where everything should have been. Y'all have only talked for a month and a half. We had a whole year. So, I mean, this like was a rush shutdown. So, I mean, it makes us feel that we are being, you know, restricted.
Well, I think what I would say that, that hopefully, they say that they've been taking into consideration what they've been hearing at each, you know, time they've been in a community setting. And we can see what, based on the information they have, that I don't, that you all are saying that you don't, that, you know, that what they can come up with when, if anything, when they talk the next time. I don't think we are gonna be able to decide it here, but I have, I've heard you. Have you all heard?
Now, I was scared to put my kids in a park now that we had to go through all of this. We even asked for permission for the park over the discussion of the park. I wouldn't even want to have none of my kids have to go there. I really wouldn't. I wouldn't even be out now because we had to go through all of this open TV over the public place. Now, I wouldn't even want him to be out.
But then you just say earlier that parks are closed, but not that no security? Like, nobody's gonna be standing in front of each park to stop people from going in? So for kids that, that, that just roam, they couldn't enter the park and it's gonna be no police presence there, right?
I don't think that's, is that what-
Okay. It is literally a physical impossibility to close the, every park, right? You know, I mean, the, the parks themselves are not closed. If, if the information that's been shared is not transparent enough for folks, be clear that we're talking about facilities, okay? So there's not gonna be any rec centers open. There's not gonna be, we're not gonna have pools or the spray ground open. These all require staff in order to maintain them and to make them available to the public. If, if you would like to walk into any park and have a picnic or go to the ground, there's no prohibition of them.
There's no staff at Forest Hills Park. I live down there. There's no staff down there.
So that's what he, but I think that's what he's saying. So the, the park is open. The spray ground may not be open, but the park is open.
So again, I think we're at the point where would, that hopefully all the people involved in the planning and decision-making, and I, we will, I will even say, hey, remember, these are key points that was brought up last night. I mean, I think, I don't know where Chief Baxter went, but, okay. I mean, I think, um, I don't know where Chief Baxter went, but, okay, but hopefully, um, everyone's listening and that they will take this into consideration and do. And again, I'm not saying something will be done or something, I don't know what can, but I think, um, that, you know, we hear, I at least hear, and I, I will ask, okay?
Cause y'all should have declared, precise, precise, when y'all gave us the information that y'all was going to these different neighborhoods talking to us about safety, y'all should've been specific and precise, what was this and what was that? So we wouldn't even have to be having this conversation, so we would've had an understanding what was, so you said, um, the parks, the money was, the shelters was gonna be, the money was gonna be refunded. Then you said the kids was gonna be able to swim for free for the next month. When you said that, you should've broke it down as a manager that knows what's going on. You should've broke that down to us as the community, that don't have no understanding of exactly what's going on. Some of y'all's speeches was in misconception today, which was contradictory, and some of the things that y'all say in the meetings, and then what y'all are saying to us. So we, as a community, that have been in these meetings and listening to what y'all say, we're coming back to y'all with the same thing that y'all are saying in these meetings, back to, again, and then y'all still don't have the precise answer to give to us as a community. So how are we to trust y'all? We can't, because there's no transparency. There, like I said, y'all keep saying y'all talk to all of these meetings, y'all ain't had that many meetings, because y'all been starting till July eighth. And then like we said, y'all only talk to certain people, like I spoke, said to Mr. Willard before, y'all didn't talk to specifically everybody that y'all needed to talk to. So therefore, like I said, y'all only been working this for a month and a half. We had from August twelfth last year till now. So we've had plenty of months to have been able to help, community forums, community this, what do y'all think should be done, what you think could be this? No, we did not do that. I really feel appalled, and I feel ashamed, even as a citizen, to be standing right here, sitting right here in Charlottesville, for the world to have been the, we've made the precedent of the world, for the world to be looking at us, to make us feel like we are not nobody. We are nobody, because look at all the people that fought for us, fought for us in those different places, that gave up their life in their time. The same people like us, as citizens, we put our life on the line, when y'all's law enforcement's with our taxpayers' money, regardless of how low income we are, or I am. I still give you your money for your paycheck. But still, y'all couldn't even secure us last year. It took victims, twenty-nine victims, a death, two police officers, for y'all to lock us completely down. We haven't even healed yet, we can't even come into a unity and community, as y'all called it last year. Now it's resilience to resistance of what? Charlottesville to the community, and then the more we voice, the more we ask, there's no specific answers. I have a complete migraine, I'm about to lose it, because the more we continue to fight as a community, to be as one, we're still pushed back from the people who are supposed to protect and service when they take the oath.
Thank you. So Levon Yats? No, yeah. All right, Louis Schultz?
All right, everybody, that was one hell of a disclaimer. Um, so, anyway, my name is Louis Schultz, I live at eighteen oh nine East Market Street. I wanna start by reminding everyone that the only reason we are having this exciting, exhilarating, and extremely informative meeting, is that three weeks ago, I shamed council into meeting tonight by pointing out that it would be illegal not to do so under council's own rules. One member of council once thought he was qualified to be attorney general. One flaunts his PhD and insists upon being called doctor. Another has more than six years in office, and two, as mayor and vice mayor, have additional specific responsibilities. All have sworn an oath to faithfully and impartially discharge the duties incumbent upon them, but none have apparently read and understood the few pages of the law as it relates to those duties. There is an acting city attorney, whose job it is to come to these meetings and advise council. The fact that she didn't speak up long before me raises some serious questions about how she has handled the other duties of that office and its nearly million-dollar annual budget. Since I last spoke, there has been even more problems with council abiding the law regarding its meetings. The background information of item H on tonight's consent agenda says there are strict rules governing remote participation in council meetings. What it doesn't mention is that news reports tell of at least one and maybe more meetings with council members participating by phone already having happened. Virginia Code two-point-two dash three-seven-oh-eight only authorizes remote electronic participation in a meeting if the public body has adopted a written policy allowing for and governing participation of its members by electronic communication means. What I see in item H is clear evidence that council broke the law in at least one meeting, being presented in a way that obscures that reality, while ironically describing the trick as being in alignment with council's vision of a smart, citizen-focused government. As noted in the text of the resolution attached to item H, under FOIA, there are very specific details regarding remote participation that must be in minutes of meetings when that happens. That is true even of closed meetings, which must begin and end in open meetings. Section thirteen of the city charter, an act of the general assembly which council must obey, says, and I quote, "At each regular meeting of the council, the proceedings of the last regular meeting and all intervening called meetings shall be presented and thereupon be corrected if erroneous and signed by the person presiding for the time being." Mayor Walker, as the person presiding, it is your duty night, to, to, tonight, to attest to the correctness of the minutes for meetings on July sixteenth, eighteenth, twentieth, twenty-fourth, and thirty-first. As a citizen, I'd like to see what you're approving, but those minutes are not in the agenda package. The minutes of regular meetings have typically been six months late and being posted online, and special meeting minutes are nowhere to be found among them, most importantly, the minutes of August twelfth last year. On that date, council approved a still mostly secret emergency ordinance that gives the chief of police extraordinary powers to impose curfews and more this coming weekend at her sole discretion. Mayor Walker, if you're truly committed to your promise to unmask the illusion, then turn to your clerk of council and city attorney right now, and ask them to explain what is going on, why this has happened, and ask what they're going to do about fixing it. Make a commitment tonight to put the minutes of all meetings online immediately and end the secrecy.
Thanks. Is there any comments?
Just a point, uh, there was a lot there, but just a point on the curfew resolution that we passed. That only allowed the police chief that night, and we had to do that in a special meeting, to declare curfew that night, and it was never exercised. So it was an enabling, um, resolution only for that-
I respect that, and you are not describing it correctly. That, that, the text of that resolution says absolutely nothing about it being temporary. That, uh, under Charlottesville's own code, an ordinance can only be repealed by another ordinance. There has never been an ordinance to repeal that is still in effect, and you damn well ought to know that.
I don't think it was an ordinance, I think it was a resolution.
It was an emergency ordinance.
It was a resolution.
It was a resolution, it wasn't an ordinance.
Was it an ordinance? But we never, it was never, it was never enacted by the-
That's not the issue that was repealed.
It was repealed August twenty-first.
It was repealed, okay.
When was it repealed?
August twenty-first.
Why are the minutes of that not available online? Why does all this stuff make him secret? That's, that's the whole point. Ms. Rice, you and I have been communicating about this, I've been telling you about the departments of charter section thirteen. You had on the agenda, as it was written on Thursday, you put all those meetings in there. And now suddenly on the agenda that everyone can see tonight, there's no mention of all those intervening meetings, even though the charter clearly requires it to be here tonight, listen.
Yeah, I do, I do think that, um, I, minutes do need to be approved by the governing body, you're absolutely right. And I think that, um, Ms. Rice and I had a discussion about, um, her trying to make sure that she, she did a resolution by the next meeting that could, um, document all those minutes, if there have been any that have, have been admitted in the past. So I think that, um, certainly, um, council is moving towards trying to make sure that all of those minutes are adopted, and that, that's just where we are right now.
But that doesn't change the law about tonight, where, where, where are those? The, the law says that those minutes shall be presented, where are they?
I, I, I think that my understanding is that they're just not ready yet, and so it is, I mean, we're just gonna have to bring them at the next meeting.
You confusing that it's just okay for council to ignore the law, it's been in place since nineteen seventy-two, because you're not ready for it.
I'm not, I'm not saying that it's okay to ignore the law, Mr. Schultz. What I'm saying to you is that, um, that they're going to try as fast as they can to comply with it, and that is the way it is tonight, and I think that if you wanna take any other individual action on that, then you should, you should do so. That's just what, that's just where we are.
You're excusing violating law, that's what you're telling me right now, isn't it?
I'd like to request that we move to the next speaker.
If something will be done tonight, and it won't be done.
I don't, I, I tried to answer, answered your question, so.
All right. So Sally Hudson. And I will make one comment real quick while she's walking up. Um, so I wasn't shamed into making the decision. We had had, um, discussions about this meeting before last week, um, but we did start, that conversation was renewed about this meeting, and, um, there were, um, many of us who thought that it was important, so, um, but thank you for bringing it up last meeting.
I know we've had a long night, so I'll try to make this quick. My name is Sally Hudson, I'm a city resident, and I'm a member of the agency budget review team that helps allocate funding to nonprofit organizations in our community. I came here tonight to ask you all to more publicly support Mayor Walker's effort to update and revise that process, and to do what you can to bring the, the board of supervisors on board from the county. Um, I was disappointed to see two articles in the Daily Progress last week that portrayed Mayor Walker as the lone supporter of that effort. Um, I think last month, all of you voted to support freezing that funding and reviewing the process. And I've been part of two really constructive meetings here at city coun, city hall this summer, where we surfaced a lot of good concerns about how that process could be updated from lots of stakeholders around the community, so I know I'm not the only one who feels this way. The process has a pretty murky mission, there's not a lot of accountability about whether it's actually moving the needle on the challenges that our community faces. It's really unclear who gets to exercise discretion at which phases, so I think there's, there's lots of reasons to do it. Um, and I know I've had constructive conversations with all of you about that. My understanding is that the next step in moving that forward is getting the county on board, because it is a joint effort of the city and the county. And I think that the, the board of supervisors is not there yet, so that if you can all stand together with one voice to ask for this. Um, I'm an economics professor at the university, and I work with, with public nonprofit partnerships like this all over the country. There are lots of really clean models that we could draw on from other communities, including some here, right here in Virginia. So I think we've got a way forward, as long as that there is, is support from our elected officials.
Thank you.
The support is there.
So Mayor Walker, I, I fully support your, your drive to review the ABRT process. We said that, I said that last meeting, I don't know why the press doesn't report that, but we, we firmly stated that.
Yeah, I know, I know you're not directly responsible for what ends up in the press. I think it's just one of those times where we could all set the record straight. Um, especially as, you know, I don't, I don't know the board of supervisors well at all, so if there's anything that you can do through those relationships to help get them on board, I think we'd be in better shape.
And I think it's important for us to, if you read that article, um, the, um, information was not conveyed from our staff, um, to the supervisors in a way that would help them to have been clearer about it. So that is a conversation that I have, um, you know, had with, um, um, the, Mr. Murphy, and hopefully that, you know, that'll be cleared up a bit, but that is where, um, the, the issue came in for, with this conversation.
And thanks for making it a priority from early on, I know you've been on this since the beginning of your campaign.
Thanks. All right, so I think we have, we're, we're still in public comment. Um, if we could take a quick, like, ten-minute break and, um, come back, and we'll go right back into, um, public comment, and, um, it's an unlimited number of, um, speakers, and we'll go right back into it.